Welcome to the Sixth Media City Council Virtual Meeting held during the COVID-19 emergency. Please check the city website for current details of COVID-19 service impacts. Meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city website. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council, standing in advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519 661 2489, extension 2425. And with that, I'll look for any disclosures of peculiar interest. Councillor Turner.
Thanks, Your Worship. With respect to the Fifth Report of the Civic Works Committee, just trying to find the right item number. It's with respect to a water report. I'll declare conflict of interest of that as my agency, the Melrose Line Health Unit, has a legislative responsibility for oversight of water quality.
I think that's item 17 2.14 on the agenda, councillor.
You're very fast. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I understand you may have one on SPPC 27, item 7 4.3.
Thank you very much. That one as well.
Thank you very much. Any other conflicts? Councillor Hallmer.
Thank you. I'll declare a peculiar interest on item 15 4.5 of the Committee for Protective Services Committee Report. This is related to the municipal operating and capital budgets for golf. And since my father is employed by the National Golf Course Owners Association and the City of London is a member, I'll declare a peculiar interest on that.
So noted. Any other declarations? I would like to, excuse me, declare a conflict relating to item 22 5.1 of the Fifth Report of Civic Works having to do with item four of the Deferred Matters List relating to the properties at 745 and 747 Waterloo Street, as my wife and daughter own a business located at 745 Waterloo Street. Any other disclosures? Seeing none, I am not aware of any recognitions. And there are no confidential matters to be considered in public. So colleagues, as we now do, we would like to refer the confidential matters and change the order of motion required to move item four to close session after Stage 13 bylaws. That will require a mover and a seconded, please. Moved by councillor Hillier, seconded by councillor Van Mirbergen. All those in favour, we will turn your attention to the screen.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. It's require a mover and seconded to approve the minutes from the meeting held March 23, 2021. Moved by councillor Lewis, seconded by councillor Cassidy. Any discussion? Seeing none.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. We have petitions in item six. These can all be moved in one motion. I'm just, for the benefit of the public, I'll quickly read them through. 6.1 is related to item four, 4.1 of the Fifth Report of the Corporate Services Committee, public notice policy. 6.2, two with one added, related to item 18 2.17 of the Fifth Report of Civic Works Committee having to do with Dundas Place temporary bicycle lanes. 6.31 related to item 16 3.2 of the Fifth Report of the Planning and Environment Committee related to the Old East Community Improvement Plan. 6.41 related to item 17 3.3 of the Fifth Report of the Planning and Environment Committee having to do with 1414 Dundas Street. 6.5, six related to item 19 3.5 of the Fifth Report of the Planning and Environment Committee having to do with 1101 Meadowlily Road South. 6.65 related to item 25 3.11 of the Fifth Report of Planning and Environment Committee related to the Masonville Draft Secondary Plan. 6.71 related to item 10 3.1 of the Sixth Report of the Community and Protective Services Committee having to do with London Housing's first emergency youth shelter. 6.81 related to item 14 4.4 of the Sixth Report of the Community and Protective Services Committee having to do with affordable housing units in London. And 6.9 added, one related to item eight 4.4 of the Seventh Report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee having to do with operation of city councils. So for all of that, I will look for a mover, please. Moved by councillor Hopkins, seconded by councillor Pelosi. Any discussion?
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero. Thank you, colleagues.
I'm not aware of which notice is given. So I'll turn us to item eight, the reports. Eight point one, the Fifth Report of the Corporate Services Committee. May I call on the Chair, councillor Cassidy, to present the report, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will put the entire report on the floor except for item six on the council agenda, which is 4.3, the issuance of proclamation for South Western Ontario Film Week, and item eight on the council agenda, which is 4.5 on the committee report, issuance of proclamation for World Press Freedom Day. I have not heard of any other items to be pulled.
Thank you. Does anyone wish any other item be dealt with separately? Seeing none, back to you councillor Cassidy.
I'll put the remainder of the report on the floor.
Comments or questions, with the exception of those two items? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Thank you, councillor Cassidy.
Put item six on the floor, Your Worship.
Thanks very much for comments from colleagues. Councillor Hallmer.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm happy to make some comments and that I'm pleased to see that on October 17 to 24, we're going to celebrate all things film in southwestern Ontario, particularly the Forest City Film Festival, the Ontario Screen Creators Conference, and the Forest City Youth Film Festival, where high school filmmakers across all of southwestern Ontario are showcased. So there will be more and more momentum building with the film industry in London, and that's great.
Thanks very much. Any other comments? Then we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy.
And I will put it with councillor Van Holst, that also wanted this one pulled.
Councillor Van Holst.
Okay. Thank you, Your Worship. And I'm sorry, actually, I just hope to make some comments on these two items, but this one is World Press Freedom Day. Of course, I'm in support of this and freedom in general. In the last year, we've seen real problems for the press with big tech taking a free ride on the backs of news outlets, YouTube deplatforming and demonetizing news outlets, and the latest attack on the world press, where sledgehammers were taken to the printing presses and computers of a news outlet in China. So we can't, we can't take our freedoms for granted, and I think promoting this is one way to keep those top of mind.
Thank you. Councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you. Make a comment. I want to thank councillor Cassidy and the committee for this recognition. I do think it is very important. It is timely, since May the 3rd is World Press Freedom Day. But it's also important that we, as a city, recognize the importance of a healthy news media and that it be reliable and accurate and responsible. And this is one way that we can support good journalism. I think it's very important to our democracy, so it's also an opportunity for us to say that we do value journalism, good journalism in particular. So again, thank you to councillor Cassidy and the committee.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Councillor Cassidy. Thank you very much. Colleagues, eight point two is the Fifth Report of the Civic Works Committee. I'll turn this to Chair and councillor Pelosi.
Thank you, Your Worship. Another robust civic works meeting was had. I've been given notice to pull item 14, being 2.8, the automated speed enforcement, item 16, being 2.13, the green bin program design, 17, being 2.14, the Ministry of Environment, drinking water one due to a conflict, item 18, being 2.17, Dundas Place temporary bicycle lanes, and item 22, being 5.1, the deferred matters list.
So noted. Does anyone wish any other item to be dealt with separately? Seeing none, any comments or questions with regard to those items, with the exception of, for the purpose of us, 14, 16, 17, 18... Excuse me, did you say 19? Excuse me, did you say nineteen as well, Councillor Pelosi?
I did not.
Thank you. And then and then item twenty-two.
Your worship.
Yes.
I will put those items on the floor, just also thanking the incoming Chair and Vice Chair of the Waste Management Working Group being Councillor Van Holst and Councillor Turner. And there was some transfer payment agreements in this and grant applications that came through committee. And the tittering for Adelaide Street underpass were the the ones of note that have not been pulled.
Any other discussion on the non-pulled items? Seen none, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thank you, Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you. Being two point eight, the automated speed enforcement on the floor, recognizing we took a different direction than staff's recommendation. And Councillor Van Merbergen asked for this one to be pulled.
Comments or questions? Councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And again, I'd like to thank the committee for this. I know this has come to us before and it was deferred back. And one of the things I find really important to me as a councillor of Ward Nine is the importance of safety in our neighborhoods. And this is an opportunity where we can start that process and make it even better, creating that safety aspect. It's, I think, also important that we, other municipalities, I know have are looking at it as well, but we can also sort of set the example here in in our city. Declaring the importance of the amps and hopefully the provincial government will take heed of the importance of this in the municipalities. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate that automated speed enforcement sounds really exciting in terms of safety in neighborhoods. But I think we have to remember this is a really costly program, one. And two, the enforcement is going to be very, very limited in terms of of what areas it would cover. So as a as a representative of a ward where I get speed concerns all of the time, I want to be really careful to make sure that people understand that this is not a citywide, even when it's rolled out, a citywide program that's going to have automatic speed enforcement in every area. And I think I think we have to make that clear to certainly the people we represent.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. Like Councillor Hopkins, I'm very pleased with the direction the committee chose to take on on this particular item. And I want to thank Councillor Helmer for putting this option forward. To me, this is, and I agree with Councillor Squire, this is certainly not the magic wand. It is not going to solve all of our speeding concerns across the city. But in those community safety zones, particularly in our school areas, I think it's going to be a valuable tool in the toolbox and hopefully free up police resources that are being used in enforcement in those zones for other uses. I certainly hope to see an opportunity to have these deployed in my ward on Wavel Street, where two schools side by side are a regular source of speeding concerns. I know that other councillors will have areas in their wards that they'll want to see it deployed to. I'm also very, very encouraged to hear that in having had an opportunity to talk to some other municipalities that the pilot projects there have gone ahead without the issuance of warning notices, which I think are really something I wouldn't support. I'd like to see us move ahead with enforcement. And I've said this at the committee meeting, and I've said it in the media, and I'll say it again tonight. For those concerned that they're going to get an unwarranted speeding ticket, the solution is very simple. Don't speed in our community safety zones.
Thank you. I next have Councillor Van Merbergen on the list.
Thank you, Mayor. As I brought up at the last committee meeting and on previous occasions, and further to Councillor Squire's point, I believe the information that I gleaned at the last committee meeting was such that we will perhaps attain three to five cameras for a million dollars for the contract for that. And and yet, as memory serves, there's well over three hundred areas that could be monitored for school safety zones in the city of London across across the entire municipality. So clearly, this is a very expensive, in my view, inefficient way to try and enforce safety when we could be using something as well, certainly a lot less expensive, like speed humps, well-placed speed humps and other traffic calming measures that are proven to work for a fraction of the cost. And therefore, we could have them spread out through a far greater number of school zones than simply three to five for a million dollars. So I think all things considered, we have, we have to look at this in realistic terms. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Morgan, Deputy Member.
Yes, thank you. I've been doing some readings since the committee meeting on this. Certainly, I'll just express my support for automated speed enforcement in certainly in school zones as well as community safety zones. I do have a question for our staff. I know we awarded a contract back in twenty nineteen on this. And I'm just curious on, you know, as we move forward, have we committed to that contract? Is it being extended out into the future? Because obviously, we delayed a couple of years. So I'm wondering at what point, you know, what is the length of time that the contract will will be now? Are we two years off of it? And and the reason why I ask that is because I'm aware that through AMO and their local, local authority services, they're in the process of putting together a solution for municipalities as well. And I think they'll be issuing their own RFPs on this, and I'm not sure if that's something that we would pursue. Obviously, we we've signed a contract for a period of time. But obviously, there are more players getting into this to try to bring the costs down. And and I'm just curious on how the existing contract works, given the delay we've had, and and what opportunity do we have to look at under other vendors down the road? Again, emphasizing that I am committed to doing this. I just had a few questions that I want to answer before I vote on this tonight.
Ms. Chair.
Thank you, your worship. So the city of Toronto operates the Joint Processing Centre for all ASC infractions, and the participation in that program development that we've been a part of provides us with capacity to continue to enter into the contract that was previously discussed by signed agreement by the end of May. And it would reduce the overall term of service by the time of delay. There are absolutely some opportunities on the horizon that we're aware of through AMO and through the working group around automated speed and other types of automated traffic enforcement. But our best bet, if we wish to proceed at this time, would be to proceed with the execution of those agreements prior to May twenty-fifth. After that, the city of Toronto's council has new requirements for us to enter into the Joint Processing Centre.
Deputy Mayor.
All right. Well, that I think that's really valuable information to know, and I appreciate Ms. Chair being able to provide it. So I'll be supporting this, and I look forward to the further discussion with colleagues.
Thank you. Councillor Van Holst.
Thank you, your worship. And just through you to staff. Again, we think that these technologies will pay for themselves in this contract. It was pointed out it was expensive, but I believe the question was asked at at committee, but I'd just like to get that answer again.
Ms. Chair.
Thank you, your worship. Our automated speed enforcement, as well as our automated red light camera running programs are intended to be self-funding. Part of that will depend on the recovery rate that we have when courts adjudicate whether or not a ticket's protested. That is the intent. We are hearing from some of our neighboring municipalities that initial costs are tracking a bit higher with some of the changes to the provincial requirements. That said, that's often a startup thing, and it will sort of taper out in the longer term.
Councillor Van Holst.
Thank you very much, your worship. I think companies providing these technologies know that councils are under tremendous pressure to make sure things are safe in their communities. And I, and I think the prices are reflective of that. I really hope to see some more affordable technologies come forward as more players enter into to compete for the business.
Thank you. Any other comments with respect to this item? Seen none, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to one.
Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you. Sixteen being two point one three, the green bin program design community engagement feedback. This was a report that came forward in regards to all the community feedback that we've been gathering in regards to the implementing the community's green bin program and next steps for potential procurement for what kind of food waste will be collected, what kind of liners, size of containers and whatnot. And this report is already divided up in items A through F, and I'll put them all on the floor.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions? Councillor Van Merbergen.
Thank you, Mayor. We could vote on A separately.
So noted. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, Councillor Van Merbergen? Okay. Seen none, Councillor Van Holst.
Yes, thank you, your worship. So we're planning an RFP for green bins, and when we get the bids, we're certainly going to look at all of them to make sure that the city gets the best deal. But I think in the in the same spirit of getting the best for London, we should wait on on this item until we see next week's update on the mixed waste and and report on on any unsolicited offers. Because I think that mixed waste, as we've seen, has some greater potential in terms of diversion, reducing greenhouse gases cost potentially, and that that may be worth holding off a little bit to pursue. So that's, that's what I refer is that we have a look at that since it's coming so soon, we can get a look at that. So and especially since that's the technology we want to end up with anyway. So we know that's, that's our our ultimate goal. It looks like there may be a chance for us to get that. I'd like to hear about that first before we make this decision. So for that reason, I'd like to move that we refer this item, number sixteen, to the to the May eleventh CWC meeting. And in that way, we can, council can deal with the the potential for mixed waste. So I'd like to put that on the floor and hoping there might be a seconded.
Is there a seconded for that? Councillor Van Merbergen, discussion? Seen none. On the referral, we will call the question.
Councillor Hillier. Closing the vote and the motion is lost four to eleven.
Thank you. Back to the main motion. Other comments or questions? Seen none. We, oh, Councillor Salee, thank you. Councillor Salee, you're on mute. Councillor Salee, you're still on mute if you wish to comment on this. Well, Councillor Salee is trying to reckon the that component. Any other comments or questions?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councillor Salee, please.
Sorry, you kicked me out of the meeting for a second there. I was just going to say that there was something wrong with my voting, so it voted in the opposite. I voted against Councillor Councillor Van Holst's motion. Won't ask for reconsideration, but I just wanted the record to show that I just didn't support Councillor, Councillor Van Holst's motion.
So so noted. Thanks very much. We will we will deal with that internally. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Seen none, we will call the question. Oh, excuse me, Councillor Van Holst, did you have your hand up? Okay, we will. Yes, sorry, we're going to, we're going to deal with A, and then we're going to deal with the rest of the items. So on A to receive the report. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
So colleagues, now we're dealing with the balance of comments or questions? Seen none, we will call the question.
Councillor Salee and Councillor Van Merbergen.
Sorry, I'm not able to vote, but I'll vote manually yea, Councillor Salee.
Councillor Turner. Closing the vote and the motion carries thirteen to two.
Thank you, colleagues. Councillor.
Thank you, your worship. I'll now put item seventeen being two point one four on the floor, being the twenty twenty Ministry of the Environment Conservation and Parks Inspection of the City of London Drinking Water System. It was just receiving report that had no items of concern in it, just it was pulled due to a conflict with Councillor Turner.
Any comments or questions, colleagues? Seen none, we'll
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen with one recused.
Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you, your worship. I'll put item eighteen on the floor being two point one seven, the Dundas Place Temporary Bicycle Lanes. Committee also had a presentation when we started by Mr. McCray outlining the cities' options that were considered and why things would or wouldn't work. And we had a robust discussion at committee. And as you've noted, there was several additional correspondence within this package in the added package regards to this item. robust discussion at committee, and as you've noted, there was several additional correspondence within this package in the added package regards to this item.
Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. First through you, if I could, I'd like to ask if they have any recent data on the traffic volumes and speeds on Dundas Place, because I think that's relevant to our decision here today.
Ms. Shear.
Thank you, Your Worship. We actually have received new data from the police earlier this week, actually late last week, sorry. The average daily traffic volume is just over three thousand vehicles per day. The average speed is thirty one point four kilometers per hour, and the eighty fifth percentile speed is thirty nine kilometers per hour.
Counsel Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Ms. Shear, for that information. I think it's really valuable to hear that in a community safety zone that we've designated as a thirty kilometer zone, we actually have fairly good compliance to that quite low speed limit in that particular area. And I think that really speaks to the design of Dundas Place itself. The way that the street and the sidewalks and the parking sort of blend together and and create a space that can be very versatile for us. And of course, the traffic volume is something that's been low, not something that would be unexpected for us, given the pandemic situation. And of course, we have a lot of construction already starting on King Street. Colleagues, the reason I actually asked to have this pulled is because of the robust discussion that happened at committee. And because I would actually like to encourage colleagues tonight to vote down the committee recommendation of option one, so that we can get option three on the floor. And I know that option three, we've had it labeled as the traffic diversion option, we've had it described as the filtered permeability option. It was the second choice of quite a number of members of committee when they were discussing this issue. And we've since, committee, received the communication from the LDBA that it's also the preferred option of businesses in the area, and not that they reached that decision easily or unanimously. But likewise, the option one that's been recommended is not unanimously supported by the cycling community either, and in fact, we've had members of the cycling committee say it doesn't go far enough. And I raised this after attending the Cycling Advisory Committee, where there was a lot of concern about the lack of, you know, full barriers along the Dundas Place street length. And that's why I raised the design of Dundas Place, because staff have been very clear with us that more permanent sorts of barriers along that stretch are not desirable and would be harmful to the infrastructure that we just completed building. What option three offers us is a compromise solution that is not perfect for anyone, but it is something that strikes a balance that businesses, cyclists, pedestrians and vehicles can all enjoy. It also means that the confusion that would be generated by switching to Dundas Place as one-way only traffic for this summer would be avoided, because we would still have bidirectional traffic there. We would just be decreasing the cut-through traffic and using that space as access only from the side streets, so that people visiting the businesses can still access them by car. But that cut-through traffic coming through from east to west, west to east, is eliminated. So I hope that committee will consider supporting this. I think it's really important that we note as we move into the summer season and the patio season. But I think that this also offers the best option for businesses who want to use patios and activation spaces for things like sidewalk sales and that kind of thing this summer. An opportunity they very, very badly need. This is not a space that is specifically for any one stakeholder. It's meant to be shared by all members of the community. So I hope that the committee will or that colleagues will actually at council tonight, support the LDBA recommendation for the filtered permeability. I've had a chance to talk to some members of the Cycling Advisory Committee, some avid cyclists in the city as well, and they would be comfortable with this too. The one thing that I did want to ask through you, Your Worship, before I wrap up to our city engineer, is the one concern that the cycling community had was barriers at Rideout and Wellington in particular to help make sure that signage alone wasn't ignored for cut-through traffic. So I wonder if Ms. Shear could comment about the option to include barriers there?
Ms. Shear.
Thank you, Your Worship. We certainly would have to take a look at the detailed design about what sort of barriers could be put into place, particularly at the Wellington and Rideout locations through traffic. The important thing will be, though, that we'll have to make sure that right churning vehicles off the north-south streets could still execute those churns, including larger delivery vehicles, which might minimize the ability to use some barricades. That said, we would be open to using them wherever we can make them work and still allow that circulation. Otherwise, we'd be using a combination of signing and other streetscaping elements.
So just very briefly, Your Worship, two follow-ups to that. If we went with the bidirectional versus the filtered permeability, what is the impact for parking spaces for those patronizing downtown businesses?
Ms. Shear.
To you, Your Worship. I'm just flipping through my notes here. It would eliminate the parking and loading on the north side of Dundas Place between Rideout and Wellington, which currently includes twenty-three spots that are loading, parking or accessible parking.
Counselor.
Thank you. So my final question, Your Worship, is through you to our staff. When the King Street construction is completed and the construction for the downtown loop moves to Queens, what is the plan at that point to address the cycling? Because I feel like the filtered permeability is something that could just be left in place, whereas I'm not sure what the plan is when Queens becomes the construction zone and King reopens.
Ms. Shear.
Thank you, Your Worship. King is a bit of a special circumstance, because we did have a protected bike lane in place that was being removed as work on the downtown loop proceeded. We are still working on the staging planning for construction management for Queens for the next phase. So that work is underway now, and we would report back on any necessary accommodations for cycling. Right now, however, there is no specific accommodation on Queens that we would be displacing from construction. That said, yes, the filter permeability could work for both essentially all of the work that would be done on the downtown loop, but we will be looking at this in more detail in the coming weeks, months.
Thank you. So I'm just going to conclude by saying, hearing that it's something that can work ongoing as the downtown loop construction continues. Whereas if we choose option one, we will end up at some point reversing it and creating a different scenario for people to get in and out of the downtown. I hope that colleagues will let the option three get on the floor by defeating option one. I think we all want to provide some opportunity for cyclists, but I'd like to provide a balance that suits everybody's requirements.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Counselor Van Meirbergen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call A separately on this.
So noted. Thank you. Other comments or questions? I'm sorry, colleagues. Counselor Hamer, please. Thank you.
Thank you. As I said at committee, my first preference is the bidirectional lanes, but I do think the traffic diversions, as long as there's some barriers, could also work at certain... That's my second preference in terms of what we do to protect cyclists during the construction season. I want to make sure I understand exactly what Ms. Shear said about the Wellington and Rideout entry points. So I wonder if there were going to be barriers, for example, the kind of planters that have been suggested by the LDBA, something that looks good, but also discourages people from coming into the street in a vehicle. How would that be set up at Rideout, do we think, and how would it be set up at Wellington? I think those are the key points. You know, left turns off of Rideout headed eastbound. I know that that's how it functions now, but I don't think that's actually necessary if we were to have barriers and try and divert traffic away from Dundas. And the right turn from Wellington westbound onto Dundas, I also don't think that that one is necessary, although that one has a more potential impact. And I just want to make sure I understand those particular movements, the west turning onto Dundas, headed east from Rideout, and the eastbound turn during right from Wellington onto Dundas, Wellington.
Ms. Shear.
Thank you, Your Worship. We have a bit of work to do about which movements can be permitted at the two terminal points of Dundas Place. We do need to provide some access to those blocks for circulation, for delivery, for accessible parking. So we have not designed where barricades can be put at this time. We would go through that process very quickly now and implement that as soon as we could, should this be council's direction. There would be some challenges in blocking the through movements and allowing those churns. But by removing those churns, we would also be restricting access to that local block for local purpose. So we do need to spend some time on this. I don't have the detailed layout of where those barricades would go or not go at this point. The focus, as I mentioned, would be, though, on precluding the eastbound through movement. My apologies. I have a mouse in my office and my dog is very excited about it. So precluding the eastbound through movement and the westbound through movement. So we need some time to work on that design and what appropriate barricades we can put in place.
Clearly, your dog has a strong opinion on such things. Counselor Hamer, please.
Okay, that's helpful. As long as there's going to be barricades that are going to prevent the through movement from coming across the bridge, going straight through on Dundas, and then similarly coming westbound on Dundas, straight through the intersection at Wellington into Dundas, as long as there's barricades there. I'm not sure how we'd manage the right turn, but I just, I want to emphasize that traffic diversion by sign is not going to result in traffic diversion, and it won't be good enough. And so we need some kind of barriers that actually deter people. We designed the street to have these barriers pop up to prevent people from coming into the space. And I know we can do it, so I'm confident we can, but I don't want to just see signs, because that's not, that's not going to work, I don't think.
Were you looking for confirmation from Ms. Shear, Counselor?
Nope. I got what I need from her. That was a great answer.
Thanks very much. Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. So I'm going to join Counselor Lewis in voting against option one as a preference with option three. And I would say and encourage the counselor, if he's going to move that motion, to include in the motion the components of physical barriers. Obviously, that adds a little bit of cost, and I think it's important direction to our staff that physical barriers, instead of just signage, be used to restrict the traffic. I'll mention a couple of reasons why I support this option. First, I've had similar conversations to some of my colleagues that this seems to be an option that overlaps both the business community as well as some members of the cyclist community, knowing that there are still people in both of those groups who are not going to be satisfied. Frankly, there is no perfect solution to this, you know, temporary navigation of Dundas Street. But I do like option three for a couple of reasons. First, I actually see it as flexible. So if it is not achieving the desired outcomes, staff can measure that, and they can make adjustments to the the other access points along the way in a variety of options, and our staff could certainly monitor that and ensure that it's effective. The second main reason is, I actually think that this, if we're going to pilot something, that this seems to me to be a strong option for a permanent mechanism on Dundas Place if it's successful. And I'm interested in, you know, seeing this opportunity to get some information on how it works, to let our staff try a few things, and then we can assess whether or not we keep it as an option moving forward after all the construction is done. Obviously, the traffic flows will change downtown, but I like the way that this has some flexibility to it. I like that it covers a variety of groups, and I like the potential it has as a permanent solution, obviously with some further investigation, so. So I'll be voting against the committee's recommendation of option one to be able to support option three.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And through you, I will also be taking the same position that that I will be voting against option one and supporting option three. I think this is, this is one of those instances where a compromise solution is the proper solution on an interim basis. And I stress that this is an interim solution that it looks like will be in place for seven to eight months. What might follow that is a different matter, but I think in this particular circumstance, and given all of the talking we have done about the downtown and investing money in the downtown, and how fragile the downtown is right now in terms of doing business, I think it's incumbent on us to look for a solution that provides something for both parties, for cyclists and certainly for the downtown businesses. And clearly, if you look at the report, option one was not one that the downtown business community, from what I can see, was supportive of. So I will again be supporting option number three.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Counselor Turner.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just advise some caution with the data that was presented at the beginning. The eighty-fifth percentile of speed was, I believe, at thirty-eight kilometers an hour, which is almost thirty percent above the posted limit. So I wouldn't say we have good compliance with speeds. That's a pretty significant increase over what the posted limit is there. I appreciate the discussion here. I think it's important that we listen to the parties involved. I think it's also important for us to make sure that as we go through construction and there's a significant increase in traffic volume in the core, that we do what we can to address cyclist safety and that connectivity. I'm with Counselor Hamer. My preferred option is bidirectional cycling lane, provides that protection, avoids the risks of being doored, which is a pretty big risk, especially in a high pedestrian volume area, where people are getting out of their cars and going onto the street. So the turnover on those spots, those parking spots should be relatively short. The filter permeability is an important strategy for the long term for Dundas Place, I think. And I think it probably should have been one of those things that was put in place at the outset. But here we are. So that said, if council is going to vote this down, then I really hope that you honor your commitment to support number three. I think that's essential, but I hope that you'll support number one. In the meantime, I don't think there's any reason why both can't exist. So those are my thoughts, but I'll be supporting one, and I can recognize the thoughts behind number three as well.
Thanks very much. Other comments or questions? I might ask the deputy mayor to take the chair.
Yes, and I'll go to the mayor.
Oh, excuse me. Before I do, I didn't realize. I see Counselor Kayabaga had her hand up first. I apologize. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me go before you. I just wanted to ask a question on what Deputy Mayor Morgan said about including in this number three, as we see that council is going to be voting option one down. Is it possible to make sure that there is physical protection for cyclists on, with option number three? And can Ms. Shear comment on what that would look like instead of signage? And can we, with the I don't know if that would be a friendly amendment, but I'm happy to explore that being part of the motion.
Let's see what Ms. Shear has to say. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. So staff will be providing some sort of barricades at the east and west terminal points of Dundas Place to dissuade through traffic. The precise design of those, we do still need to work on, but option three does not include any lateral barriers between biking space and driving spaces. So we, under this option, we would try to remove as much through traffic as we could and save that traffic space for local access. But cycling would occur in mixed use in the current driving lanes.
Counselor Kayabaga.
So I will then again go back to what Deputy Mayor Morgan was proposing, adding an amendment that includes physical barriers that would be protection for cyclists.
Thank you for that. I think for us to get to that stage, we would, if you're looking to consider an amendment, we would have to vote down option one and then consider three and then deal with it with whatever that looks like, should we get to that point.
Thank you. In the meantime, then I'll be supporting option one until I know that there's reasonable reasons to believe that there's going to be protection, physical barrier protection for cyclists.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Turn it over to you, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, and now I have the mayor.
Thanks very much, colleagues. I was part of the committee that supported the first option, but I recall very well the discussion that we had in terms of what the various options were, and we reviewed those. And as we did, I recall Counselor Hamer saying one, three, and it wasn't a flip of a coin, but And um as we did, I recall councillor Homer saying one, three, and it wasn't a flip of a coin, but uh both would uh serve certain purposes. So while I did uh vote in favor of option one, as uh did the committee, I will say to you, I will be voting it down uh in favor of option three. I think that what we all try to do is to try to find that balance. And what's the balance? It's the balance associated with uh accommodating vehicular traffic, uh accommodation and safety associated with pedestrians uh and uh and uh the safety associated with cyclists, and you try to find those balances. And the needs of all three are paramount, and I think that option three does give us that option. So in that respect, uh I've made a determination that I will vote down option one and uh will support option three. So uh with that, I'll turn it back to you, deputy mayor.
Yeah, and I I don't have anyone else on the speakers list, but I'll turn the chair back to you to check.
Any other comments or questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. Um and I actually made the comment at um at the committee that I that I would have supported option three, but I meant option three in addition to option one or two. Um so uh and and the reason, uh even with the reduced volume of traffic that would come with with the barriers at the end of the street and preventing the through traffic, you still will have bicycles and users, cyclists using the street, who are much more vulnerable users of the street, sharing the lane with uh automobiles and um even at even those that are following the speed limit. Um and I I do note that the average speed is still um is at the speed limit, but um average means there are many above the speed limit, as well as some below the speed limit. So um I I I I do feel like a separate lane for cyclists is the safest option for cyclists. And and it's the safest option for all levels and all ages of cyclists, which is what we should be designing our cycling infrastructure for. Uh we don't think of someone like Stephen councillor Turner, who is an adult male and cycles avidly and is an experienced cyclist. We should be building our cycling infrastructure for councillor Turner's daughter or even someone younger than councillor Turner's daughter. That's that's who our cycling infrastructure is supposed to be designed for, the safest option for the most vulnerable road user. Um I I wanted to address the comment about having festivals in the summer when when Dundas Place is closed to vehicular traffic. I asked this question at committee. If it's closed to vehicular traffic, it's closed to cycling traffic as well. So if Dundas Place is open for a festival and there are um cafes spilling out into the street or sidewalk sales, cyclists would be expected to dismount. They are they are vehicles on the road under the Highway Traffic Act, and and therefore it's closed to traffic, whether it's a car or a cyclist. Um I also want to address the the concerns that some businesses have raised. Uh study after study after study shows that cyclists spend money in downtown shops, whether it's in London downtown or any other downtown. Cyclists are Londoners too, cyclists are shoppers too. And in fact, I would say that a cyclist traveling slowly down the street is more likely to notice something in a shop window and park the bike and pick that up. Uh using Dundas Place as a a commuting route in a vehicle, in a car, going thirty kilometers or more. Um Dundas is is generally just a road like any other road. And and as I said, there are numerous studies in cities around the world that show that cyclists even uh tend to spend more money uh in a local shop than uh somebody using their car. So I will support the recommendation that's coming from committee. It doesn't sound like it's got widespread support on uh on council, but I did want to dispel uh those myths that we couldn't shut down Dundas Place if we had a cycling lane, or that cyclists are bad for business somehow. Uh the opposite is true. And paramount in in any of our cycling infrastructure should always be the most vulnerable road user on our streets.
Thank you. To be clear, I did not, uh just as I will always clarify, I didn't hear references to myths in that uh in any of the commentary of council tonight, but thank you for your comments. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Holst.
Um thank you, worship. So I think I'll I'll support the initiative, um councillor Lewis. The the utopian ideal of us being able to share a street like Dundas Place safely is 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 attractive to me, but I see that we we should be, we should be doing something. However, I think there's also some expectations of how we should be driving on this that maybe should be articulated. So maybe I could go to you, uh through you to uh Ms. Share, to just say explicitly how we hope um drivers will be using this street if we're using the the permeability uh strategy. Cyclists as well, because of course I I hear pedestrians complaining about cyclists uh as well.
Thank you. Didn't mean to cut you off. I thought you were done with your question, councillor uh Mishra.
Thank you, your worship. The intent under traffic diversion or uh the filter permeability would be to remove traffic that is not intending to stop within the extensive Dundas Place, but to allow circulation from the side streets for traffic that wishes to uh access those businesses for deliveries, pickups, uh loading, or potentially parking to patronize them. Cycling would occur in the two traffic lanes. Pedestrians would remain in the designated pedestrian spaces. Um that that's generally how that principle would work. You'd be removing the traffic that's trying to shortcut through to get somewhere else and keeping some circulation to support the operational needs of those businesses, uh access to accessible parking, those sorts of things.
Councillor, does that answer that?
It does. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other final comments or questions? Councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I wasn't going to say anything, but it has been a very interesting um the conversation. I I I do appreciate it uh very much. I did not see the committee meeting, and I have heard, though, from a number of uh residents uh about the importance of wanting to go downtown, to experience downtown. They're not avid cyclists, the residents that have reached out to me. They want to be i- in in the safest environment as possible, but they want to support the downtown. And for that reason alone, I will, uh from what I've heard, option number one is the safest option. And um I I I think that is really important when we make these decisions, that that we do look at the vulnerable um of 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 us. Uh I I ride a bike. I'm not an uh avid biker, but I do want to be able to use the streets in a safe manner, because if if not, I'm not going to bike, and I'm not going to go downtown as often as I would like to. So it is important that we um provide the safest option, and for that reason, I'll be supporting option one.
Thank you. Any other comments? So colleagues, it looks like we've been asked to split A and B, A being option one, as the consideration for the first vote. Uh voting in favor of option one deals with that. Is the issue, turning it down may uh open up uh other options. So with respect to that, I will call the question on A.
Closing the vote and the motion is lost, seven to eight.
Uh thank you, your worship. With that, uh I would like to move a motion uh that option three be approved with the addition of direction to staff uh to implement physical barriers at the appropriate entrance points.
Do you have a second here for that? Councillor Squire, comments or questions? Councillor Lehman.
Thank you. All the way in here, I didn't speak to the first uh motion. Um the reason I'm supporting this is the merchants saw on Dundas Street have had to put up with a lot of construction over the last number of years. First, it was uh building the Flex Street. Uh and now uh construction all around them, uh first with uh then with King Street, and now with the um the rapid transit loop. Uh I spoke to the cycling advisory committee head, and there was no clear consensus there. Um I spoke to the LDBA, and um it wasn't unanimous, as has been mentioned. Uh however, uh there was a definite preference for for option three. Coming from Ward Eight, um my residents do, as councillor Hopkins said, want to support downtown. But the biggest concern uh for coming downtown is uh parking and also confusion on how to get around downtown with years of construction. Uh I think there's a tendency to to just avoid it entirely. Uh I think this option um is the least confusing option for uh for people coming downtown and getting directly to the merchants that they want to support. You know, we 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 put a lot of time and effort in designing a flex street. Um and I think uh this option as well so kind of goes closer to the original design uh of the Flex Street uh and how it was intended uh to be used. Um so I will support um this uh this motion um and in reference to uh the merchants through their LDBA as their supported uh smart option to go on this.
Thank you, councillor Flosa.
Thank you, your worship. Um obviously, I am aware of discussion at committee. Um wondering through you to staff, recognizing one had many feedbacks from the cycling community in regards to protected bike lanes, concerned about being doored, and recognizing these parking spots in this area will be one hour parking versus two hours to help with the higher rate of turnover, allowing for more parking to businesses. And recognizing permanent barriers will stop us from actually using the Dundas Flex Street as intended is purposely built, COVID uh parameters pending. The estimated cost of option three is five thousand. We're talking about different barriers, more planters. Um could staff give an estimate of what they think they would need in order to do option three, but with more barriers? Um movable barriers uh to allow for cycling safety?
Ms. Share.
Thank you, your worship. Uh I, may I just clarify a question? Uh if the council are looking for more barriers to reduce through traffic or barriers between, because the option three would not include any specific lanes designated for cycling, so we wouldn't be looking for barriers to separate them from uh traffic moving in the same direction.
Councillor Flosa.
Thank you. Uh so my question specifically would be barriers at the end of the streets, and also recognizing we're hearing from cyclists with visual proof that there's vehicles taking opportunities to park on the sidewalks as well, and they're looking for more definition of the space. So I know we do have some planters, just perhaps not enough, so looking to see what your opinion would be on cost to do the filter permeability um and more money that you would need for that, as well as some enhancements uh to recognize the cycling safety questions that are already raised of um the space of how it's being used improperly by motorists.
Ms. Share.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Uh so the five thousand dollar estimate is probably in the ballpark for the range for the signing and some endpoint barriers at Wellington Rideout in particular. It might be a little bit more, but it's certainly accommodable. Uh it's certainly less than the thirty thousand we had uh associated with the unidirectional bike lanes. Uh so something we can easily accommodate within budget. With respect to some of the behavior we've seen for parking, the double parking, the parking in pedestrian spaces uh that's been happening on Dundas Place, we are working with our colleagues uh in Parks and Recreation and in Parking Services to address that. We have implemented another nine designated spots for short-term parking and loading on the south side of Dundas Place throughout its length, to hopefully focus some of that behavior where it ought to be and instead of where it ought not to be. Uh we do have some funding available within our existing uh budgets for Dundas Place as well that we could be using to provide some more planters or physical barriers. The work on what that looks like is just underway right now. Um but I I would expect it's in the less than twenty-five thousand dollar range.
Councillor Flosa.
No, that was perfect. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I have no one else on the speakers list. We will call the question.
Councillor Kayabaga.
Um thank you. Uh I'd like to just ask um if the the current motion on the floor councillor Lewis um mentioned.
I'll ask the clerk perhaps to uh read the motion.
The motion is that the civic administration be directed to bring forward the necessary bylaws to operationalize option three traffic diversions with respect to Dundas Place temporary bicycle lanes with components of physical barriers being included in the plan.
Thank you. And we are in the voting uh process.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, fourteen to one.
Colleagues, I think we are now be, oh, excuse me? So then we would be including the option just approved with B, all of that as amended. Comments or questions? Councillor Kayabaga, do you have your hand up again? I see it. Or is that from before? Please, go ahead.
No, I don't.
Thank you. So as amended, we will call the question.
Councillor Squire. Closing the vote and the motion carries, fifteen to zero.
Thanks very much, councillor Flosa.
Thank you. I'll now put item twenty-two being five point one for as uh there was a conflict declared by the mayor, and this is my final item.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Councillor Van Holst. Closing the vote and the
Thank you. Councillor Flosa.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you very much. And now, under eight point three, the fifth report of the Planning and Environment Committee, I'll call on the chair and councillor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I know that I will be pulling item seventeen, which is fourteen, fourteen Dundas Street. item 19, which is 101 Meadowlily Road South, and number 26, which is the third report of the London Advisory Committee on Heritage, as they had some matters that related directly to the Meadowlily development. Other than that, I have not heard from any other counselors of matters they wish to have pulled.
Thank you. Does anyone wish any other items to be dealt with separately? Seeing none, with the exception of 7, 19, and 25, those who are on the floor, any comments or questions?
26.
Excuse me, 17, 19, and 26. I apologize. Comments or questions? Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I just would like to make a comment on 2.12, which is the 2021 Post-Development Environmental Impact Study Monitoring. I just want to thank staff for bringing this report to us. We were just receiving it. But I am really pleased that we are going to be undertaking and evaluating some of our subdivisions that we assume and comparing them to pre-development. Obviously, we have to try to, we're trying to achieve enough benefit to our natural heritage areas. So I I think this is just another way that we can monitor and make sure that the the studies and assessments, pre-development, and then comparing them after that we are achieving the the importance of developing around natural heritage areas and really looking forward to getting some data coming back from staff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hamer.
On item, I think it's 2.13, the Building Division Monthly Report. I wanted to just ask through the mayor to staff how things are going in terms of the demand and being able to keep up with the demand for residential construction in particular. I'm quite concerned that the building levels and the demand for housing is so high that we're going to have a very hard time keeping up. And not just this year, but over the next couple of years. And I wanted to check in through the mayor to see perhaps Mr. Cosmas wants to comment on that, how it's looking and what kind of steps might be taken in the short term if if we're finding that there is a really tight capacity constraint to alleviate it.
Mr. Cosmas.
Through his worship. I hope you can hear me.
We're fine.
So it has been very challenging. We've had significantly high volumes over the last year and we've had significant challenges in recruiting appropriate resources to deliver those services. But notwithstanding that, we have been able to manage and actually stay within our legislative timeframes. It's been, but but it does not go with saying that staff have really stepped up above and beyond in order to do that. We will be bringing forward to you in the upcoming committee cycle an update on the Building Stabilization Reserve Fund. We are currently recruiting for additional staff and we could have a conversation about the appropriate staffing levels at that time if the counselor wishes.
Counselor Hamer.
Thank you very much. And I did want to commend the staff in this area for for the work that they have done to keep up with the demand. It's difficult job in the normal circumstances. It's a lot harder when demand goes up and COVID restrictions make everything harder. And I think the staff in the area are doing the best they can and it's certainly noticed. I'm glad to see that we're having a report coming forward at the next cycle. I'll save my questions for that and I'll come to the committee meeting to talk about it. Thanks very much, Mr. Cosmas.
Thank you, counselor. I have Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to comment on item 25, which is 3.11 on the committee report. It's the Masonville Area Draft Secondary Plan. It keeps moving through the process. I want to thank staff so much for this report and the presentation they gave. They did a really good job. It was very clear. There always is a lot of trepidation, maybe some nervousness from the public when we come up with these secondary plans. They tend to think that the city is is the developer and is creating all of all of this and building all of these hypothetical developments that show up in a secondary plan. So it's always an opportunity for discussion and conversation with our constituents. I know Counselor Morgan also spoke at the Planning Committee meeting and we had constituents because it's sort of it's the Masonville areas in both of our wards. So it was a really good plan and again brought brought forth some concerns from the area. It was great great to hear staff listen to and address those concerns and I'm sure the plan will continue to be refined refined as they go forward and will continue to consider all of the the discussion and input that they've received from the area residents. So I I just want to say thank you again for this really good plan and looking forward to seeing it keep going down the road.
Thank you. Counselor Turner.
Thanks, your worship. A few comments on a few of these things. Number one, with respect to Bill 2229 and Ontario's flooding strategy, item 2.4 on the committee agenda, I appreciate the report. I think it's important for us to to recognize the the impact that the legislative changes have had in municipalities' relationship and provinces' relationship with conservation authorities. Conservation authorities are important partners to municipalities. If some municipality see conservation authorities as barriers to some of the the functions of the municipality, I think we need to take a look at them as as close partners. And they they provide us very important research and information, especially with respect to the watershed and to how we develop and grow as a community in a way that's ecologically responsible and recognizes the impacts that our growth have on that water course and that water system. The the ability to maintain strong watersheds is essential for us to be able to have a strong ecosystem as well as just for human sustainability in turn with respect to drinking water and agriculture and all of that. So so I it's important to have an update to see what those impacts are. It's disappointing that the province moved ahead with a number of these these changes. And so I just wanted to highlight that. I thought it was very important here. The the second was, as Counselor Hopkins identified in 2.12, the Post-Development Environmental Impact Study Monitoring. Through you, your worship, I just had a question. I couldn't find it in the reports and perhaps I missed it. What's the period of post post-development EIS monitoring that will be taken? Is it just the year or is it a little more longitudinal than that?
Mr. Cosmas, are you are you responding to that?
I think Mr. Omens is on the line and he could provide the time for
Good, Mr. Omens.
Thank you, your worship, through you. So it's an excellent question and what we do is we take the recommendation from the EIS for the amount of monitoring depending on the feature and what's been studied. Generally, it ranges from three to five years, three years being the most common. So that's what we'll be undertaking the monitoring for as part of this program.
Counselor Turner.
That's for your worship. Thank you. That's that's helpful and great to see. I think this is a win on two sides. One, this is something that the Environmental and Ecological Planning Advisory Committee has been advocating for for a long time. It's incredibly important because the environmental impact studies identify those sensitivities and adjacencies to our environmental features such as environmentally significant areas. And knowing what the impact is to make sure that the the projected impacts or mitigation measures that were identified in the EIS actually come to fruition and that there's an opportunity to intervene if the engineering or the design had some limitations or or dysfunctions. So this is this is a huge win and this on the second front is that it's coming from development charges. So it's part of the development charge system. I think that's quite appropriate as it's new growth and and through DCs as well. The third one I wanted to highlight was just with respect to the number 2.5 Affordable Housing Community Improvement Plan Loan Agreements. This is good news. This is just a further to direction that council has already given with the respect to these loans. But the ability to delegate the authority to staff will help us be more nimble and be able to issue those loans faster too. So good news on a few of these fronts and and one not so good news, but I appreciate all the reports and information that are coming through the planning committee.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I see none and we'll be then dealing with what is on the floor with the exception of items 17, 19, and 26, we'll call the question.
Counselor Salih and Counselor Van Mirberg. Counselor Salih. Counselor Salih. I will mark him as absent on this vote. Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you. Counselor Squier.
The first matter from the agenda is item 17 3.3, which was an application related to 1414 Dundas Street. Just very briefly, that's one of the first developments on what on the lands that used to be the London Psychiatric Hospital, certainly when I started going out there and practicing law. It's a it's a development for the London Humane Society. There wasn't objection really to the development itself, but an issue is and was before the committee and now before council with regard to a parking lot adjacent to the feature called the Tree LA and staff's recommendation was that the parking could not be located where it was and the committee went in a different direction. So I'm prepared to put that matter on the floor for debate.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions? Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I did not support this, the committee's direction at committee. This is a good news story. The Humane Society's new home in London, I think, is is a great opportunity for being part of this development. But I did support staff's recommendation, which was to refuse it and one of the when it came to the parking. And we did, committee tried to refer it back to have the applicant and staff work on the parking and and do some more work around the landscaping part, but that was for me, unfortunately, it was not supported at committee. So to be consistent, I think I will still not be supporting the committee's direction. And one of the reasons I didn't support this at committee was that there is a secondary plan at the on these lands and to me, it is going to set a precedent as much as we want to be able to provide opportunities for the Humane Society. There are other opportunities there and the precedent that we'll be setting here is how we work around the the LA, the cultural heritage LA and and design parking. There's going to be more development in this area. So I to be consistent with our secondary plan, I think it is important and not to set that precedent. So again, I'll be not supporting the committee's direction, even though this is a good development moving forward with the exception of the the parking next to this cultural heritage area.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. So I am going to, I'm rising to encourage colleagues to support the committee recommendation on this. While I certainly respect Counselor Hopkins' concerns about secondary plans, the reason that these things come to us is because there are times when the plan doesn't necessarily fit the ideal use of the land. And we heard from a non-staff planner on behalf of the applicant and and the reason that I supported this and moved it opposite the staff recommendation is there is room for interpretation here. And when we are talking about a 10-meter buffer, landscaped buffer by the applicant between the Tree LA and the parking area. To me, I agree with the outside planners' interpretation that that is not adjacent, that there is a division there with a landscaped space. You know, this is in Ward Four. It is in Counselor Helmer's Ward. It's right next to mine. This land has been vacant for a long time. This is a great use of the land and and it's also a difficult piece of land to work with. The way it is sandwiched between two rail lines, the Tree LA and the Dundas Street corridor with only one possible safe point of entry from Dundas Street, which is an auto-oriented retail and commercial corridor, which means vehicle traffic does need a parking space. And that is why the Humane Society has the parking laid out the way it does. However, we also heard from the applicant during the meeting that they are more than happy to continue to work with staff during the site plan portion of the application moving forward and may actually be able to reduce the number of parking spots that they need when the plan is finalized. So I believe the applicant is working in very good faith here. I think the plan is reasonable and, you know, I respectfully disagree with staff's interpretation of what adjacent to the Tree LA is in the secondary plan. So that's why I moved it at committee and that's why I'm encouraging people to support it now so that the Humane Society can go ahead with their application and start building their new home.
Thank you. I have Counselor Turner.
Your worship, I agree with Counselor Hopkins' assessment on this. If if we can't follow our plans, they're not worth the paper they're printed on and we've seen this happen a few times. So I think it's quite reasonable to ask to do the referral back to staff so that they can work through the the any of the challenges associated with Section A here. The the remainder, I think we could probably pass, but we could probably refer A back. Perhaps if I could through you to staff to figure out if that decoupling challenges the rest of the the application and passing B and C.
If that's a question for staff, let's ask staff.
Thank you, your worship, through you. I would suggest that it's all a package that must be taken completely together given that A is affecting the actions from B and C.
Counselor Turner.
Fair enough. That's why I asked, which is helpful. So then I would move a referral back to staff. The referral provides that direction to allow staff to continue to work with the applicant to resolve the conflict here. I don't see it as insurmountable and and provides the applicant with understanding that council supports staff in finding that resolution as well.
Do you have a second here for that? Referral, Counselor Turner. I see Counselor Hopkins. Comments or questions on the referral? Counselor Hamer, you had your hand up on the main motion. Do you want to speak to the referral?
I do. I'll try and be brief. I did suggest the idea of a referral at Planning Committee. I think my thinking was very much in line with Counselor Turner. Since the Planning Committee meeting, I had an hour and a half long discussion with the applicant about their plans and I would say the possibility of finding a different design that would not be in conflict with this policy is very low based on that discussion. We cover a lot of ground. I don't think they're willing to move and I don't think a referral, other than causing a delay, would result in a different outcome, unfortunately. I I had hoped that it would be possible, but so I'm not going to support the referral. I do think back in time when I was at Planning Committee, I thought it was a good idea. Since then, having spent some time talking with them, I don't think that there's anything fruitful that's going to come out of it. And so I think you should just deal with the motions in front of us instead of the referral.
Thank you. Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, your worship. I won't be supporting the referral.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Seeing none on the referral, we will call the question.
Yes? Click it. Sorry, click on it. Is it working? Counselor Cassidy?
I voted. Did it not come through?
Do you still have the voting?
It came up again, so I'll do it again.
Thank you. Closing the vote and the motion is lost, six to nine.
So we are now back to the main motion. Does anyone else wish to speak to speak to this? I saw Counselor Van Holst and then Counselor Helmer.
Thank you, Worship. So this is a very well-thought-out plan that will have an important services to Londoners. So the secondary plan is is a secondary consideration for me. I think the ten meters of landscaped space is superior to having buildings right up against the trees. And I also note that the applicants are offering some of their internal space for community use. And I I see this as a potential way for Londoners to access the the Tree L.A., the walkway that's that's going to be there. Now, most of the other buildings, I believe, are are intended to be residential. I think there's going to be some commercial. But in in those cases, I can see where having the the building, front doors, and the the commercial access right up against the the Tree L.A., which would make it a wonderful, wonderful place to walk. And however, in in for this purpose, I I think it's better the way it is. So that's why I support that. I don't see it as precedent-setting. And and I think deeper into the 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 Tree L.A., we should we should keep to that secondary plan. One advantage about having the the buffer and the parking lot is that from the street, you'll be able to see you'll be able to see better the the environmental feature, which if we had buildings right up against it, you you would drive along and only be able to see right right down down the corridor, but it wouldn't it wouldn't be as visible and and less attractive. So I'm in support of this for a number of reasons and very thankful for the for the applicants to to choose this space. I think it's it's going to be a great addition to the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Helmer.
Thank you. So I'm going to move an amendment to the recommendation from committee and then speak to that. I'd like to just reserve my comments about the main motion until we deal with the amendment. So I'd like to add a direction to the Site Plan Approval Authority that they consider moving as much of the parking to the rear as possible. I'm just assuming that we'll go against the secondary plan policy and allow the parking between the building and the cultural heritage landscape feature. And if that is going to happen, I'd like to have a direction to the Site Plan Approval Authority to have as much parking as possible moved, either reduced or moved to the back. So that's my amendment. I think that that's mitigating some of the problems that will come from allowing parking between the building and the cultural heritage landscape.
I think you have a secondary. Counselor Lewis? Comments or questions? Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Worship. I'll just say I'm happy to support Counselor Helmer on this. As I spoke to him personally, I said, let's do what we need to do to work through any significant barriers through site plan. And that's what's being proposed here, so I'm happy to support that.
Thanks very much. Other comments or questions? Counselor Van Holst?
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a question to the mover as to to what he sees is the problem with with having the parking where it is. What 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 challenges do you see there that the buffer isn't addressing?
Will have you answer, Counselor Helmer, as you wish?
I'm going to save my comments about the problem with the parking up to the main motion. I will tell you that in my discussion with the applicant, they're pretty open to the idea of relocating some of the parking. And so I think that that's a reasonable thing that they are willing to look at. And that's why I'm moving it.
Thanks very much. Counselor Van Holst?
I'm sorry I didn't get the answer to my question, but so I'll decide from any other conference whether or not to support the motion.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes, I'm going to support the amendment as well. That aligns with the conversations I had with the applicant too. They certainly through the site plan process, they're willing to see what they can do. And I think this is a reasonable direction to our staff as the Site Plan Authority to work with them on this. So I'll support the amendment.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? So on the amendment, we will call the question.
Counselor Van Mirberg? Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to one.
So now we have the main motion as amended. We will look for a mover for that. I saw I've got a couple of folks here, but Counselor Helmer, you had your hand up right away. Was that was that to move this or was that to for in line for discussion on this?
Just want to speak to the main motion. I won't be moved.
Okay, I've got a mover in Counselor Lewis, a secondary in Counselor Squire. Comments, questions? Counselor Helmer?
Thank you. So having moved the amendment, I want to encourage colleagues, unfortunately, doesn't seem to can be worked out, any kind of compromise, really, to follow the policy and have this kind of development happen. So I would ask you to vote against it. What's being recommended by the committee is to ignore the secondary plan policy that says no parking between the buildings and the cultural heritage landscape features throughout the entire secondary plan. So it's not just the Tree L.A., it's all the cultural heritage landscape features. That's the policy that's at issue. The secondary plan was passed back in two thousand and eleven. And actually, the council for this one dealt with some minor amendments. We had to put in some language from the eighty-nine official plan to make sure it was current once the London London Plan came into effect. We didn't have a problem there. It's actually been passed by two councils. And obviously, it's impacting a very large part of the city. It's probably the biggest residential infill opportunity. And it's very important that it's done well. The landscape itself is unique. A lot of it has fallen into disrepair from being vacant over a long period of time and being neglected. And it's very important that we get this right. And the policy framework that was put in place was really heavily focused, the secondary plan, you read through it, it's ninety pages long, very focused on protecting the heritage features of this property. And they're not just the buildings. It's what the overall property looks like, and the Tree L.A. is really an important part of that. Now, obviously, it's over time, really fallen into neglect. You know, it's overgrown in some places. I've been out to that property more times than I'd like to count to help pick up garbage that's blown onto the we used to be the lawn bowling area, caught in the weeds by the train tracks. But it's not going to be like that in the future. And there's lots of great developments that are going to happen on this property and the property to the north, and the secondary plan covers it all. So the the issue with the parking is that putting parking beside the cultural heritage landscape feature is going to make it worse. It's not going to make it like a great place where you want to walk. It's going to be walking beside a parking lot. And that's just not a great design. So one of the reasons that the buildings are designed to be oriented to the Tree L.A. is so that the whole thing, the whole cultural heritage landscape feature feels like it's still the focal point of the overall site. And that the buildings that come that are new are fitting into that existing cultural heritage landscape. So, you know, this is a relatively small part of the overall project, the redevelopment. But I think it's an important thing that we follow the policy that is in place and that we don't let parking be between the building and the Tree L.A. I do think the applicant has done a lot to try and have parking and still have a buffer and create the views and keep it better. The buffer makes it a lot better than putting the parking lot directly beside the Tree L.A. But the policy is no parking between the buildings and and the Tree L.A., not no parking beside the Tree L.A. And so, you know, I I wanted to discuss with them how it could be accommodated, whether they can move the parking to the rear. And unfortunately, I don't think that that's possible, given what they're wanting to do on the site. So I think the application needs to be refused. Something else can be built here, a mixed-use commercial building with residential, something else that would fit within the secondary plan. And the Humane Society could find another location for their new building, which I think looks like a great idea. And with the exception of this one issue, I think it's a great development proposal. I want to say that's the substance of this issue. We had not too long ago, a council that used to ignore staff advice and pass recommend, you know, their own ideas eight-seven all the time. And what happens when you substitute your own personal preferences for the official plan policy or the secondary plan policy is that we end up with a lot of LPAD appeals. Either developers appeal them or the citizens come to meetings and appeal them. What happens is everything is delayed. And people feel like they can't get a fair shake because no one knows what the policy framework actually is until they show up at the meeting. And so separate from this specific matter, which I would like you to vote against, I also want to caution us as strongly as I possibly can that doing planning this way is going to result in a lot of really long planning meetings, a lot of really long drawn-out council meetings, a lot of LPAD appeals on all different sides of the issue, which is going to grind development to a standstill on a lot of these important projects, including this one. You know, if they come in with parking that's adjacent to the cultural heritage all throughout the rest of the site, it's going to delay things. And these are not short delays. There was an appeal on this very site back in two thousand and eleven when the secondary plan came in. The Lawn Bowling Club appealed it. It took in a year almost to have a hearing about it, and then another year to actually reach a settlement. That was just over the secondary plan. And those delays really cost. And so, you know, there's lots of developments where I think the parking is totally excessive. There's lots of developments where I think, you know, we need to have more intensification in the core, not outside. But the policy framework doesn't support that. And so I support those developments, even though I don't really like them.
Thirty seconds.
So I just want to caution us that, you know, just coming up with our own policy preferences, because sometimes they can interact in ways that there's no majority, because for these reasons, somebody doesn't support it, and for these other reasons, somebody else doesn't support it. And nobody finds that out until they come to the planning meeting. And that's not a fair way of doing planning. It's not a way that's going to result in good planning decisions in the long run. And it's going to take us down a road we should not be going down. So this specific issue is small, I would say. It has the potential to become very big. And I would really caution us to think very carefully about whether this is a good idea or not.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you. I guess I have a different opinion than Counselor Helmer. You know, this piece of land, it's a very unique piece. I think it's limited for development. There's train tracks that go across the north end of it. Am I here? Is that still maybe vacant for another ten years? The Humane Society has come up with a really good-looking plan. It's a gorgeous building that's going to really enhance the services of the Humane Society in London. It also provides the opportunity for the Humane Society to be in a more accessible location. Usually, operations of this nature are on the outskirts of town. Now you have something that's more in town, that will allow more people to interact, which is kind of the idea behind the Humane Society, is provide more neighborhood interaction, not just as a place to drop off pets or pick up pets, but to actually learn more about what what they're doing. Unfortunately, the way the land is, the the outdoor site for the the animals and for the neighborhood interaction is on the east side. So that leaves only one side for the parking. Trees aren't going to be removed here. They've increased the L.A. for more distance for consideration of concerns. And they also provided willingness to work within the site plan. And I think that, you know, that's why I supported Counselor Helmer's amendment to recognize that fact that, you know, they're willing to work as much as they can to make this project a good project. And I, you know, to to stick with the plan and lose this opportunity to bring in this service at this location is desperately needed. The current Humane Society is is in a in a state where it can't continue much longer. Like I said, this is a really good project. It's going to enhance the area. It's going to provide a use for that land that's not vacant for quite a while. So I encourage my colleagues to support this.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, Worship. I won't be supporting it. We just talked about the Masonville Secondary Plan. Secondary plans are extremely, extremely important. And they generally involve a whole lot of community engagement. So when you have a large area like the Masonville area or like this area or the Southwest Area Plan or all of these other, especially old Brownfield sites where we are, the McCormick site, where we're looking at doing huge developments in in an area that's 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 either been sitting vacant for a while or now it's time to rejuvenate and and create a new use. The Byron gravel pits as well. We've been working for years on these different secondary plans. And people come out. People have concerns. People have interests. And they want to, they want their voice to be heard. And we spend an inordinate amount of time discussing these secondary plans. And so then the very first developer that comes along and says, yeah, notwithstanding all of that community input, notwithstanding everything that's being created and this vision. And and that's the thing with a secondary plan. It is a vision. It's not just a policy that we can decide in this instance, let's make an exemption. It's a secondary plan is a completely different animal. It is a vision and a and a for a holistic approach to an area. And we run into, as Counselor Helmer said, we run into all sorts of trouble. And the two thousand, anybody that sat in the last term of council will remember the Southwest Area Plan and that Enterprise Corridor. How many times did that come back to our council? Because the council before had ignored staff's recommendations and made a whole bunch of changes. There was an O M B hearing involved in there. There were there were trade-offs made. And all it did was create extreme problems down the road, and that holistic vision was lost. So a secondary plan is extremely important. We use them in London in areas of 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 great public interest where it's where it's it we need to have that holistic vision for how the development will take place. And I always tell Ward Five residents, when we talk about the Masonville Plan, this is good for you. A secondary plan is good for you because it gives you some kind of level of certainty for how that development in that area is going to take place. So when we go ahead and just throw out the secondary plan at the first application that comes our way, then we're being dishonest to the residents that we've already said, this is certainty for you. So now you have
Can I can I caution on the word dishonest, Counselor Cassidy? I think that's a word you might want to change and
Sorry, sorry, Your Worship. I don't mean that in that somebody is being dishonest. It's a perception. So there is a perception from the residents that they're that they they weren't, they didn't hear the whole truth. And I know that that's 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 their perception, and it's not necessarily the case. But it's important if we're making these secondary plans and people want that kind of certainty in place. I think we need to follow through.
Thank you. I have Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Worship. You know, I'm hearing a lot
you know, I'm hearing a lot of, oh, we're going to have appeals from the community. We're going to have objections for the, from the community. Colleagues, the fact is, this notice was circulated and there were zero objections from the public to this development. Uh, respectfully, we heard from warehouse guys, who is the immediate next door neighbor. Uh, and we heard from the Argyle BIA, uh, that they are supportive of this application moving forward. Um, you know, the idea that we may have, uh, mixed, you know, some future potential use of mixed commercial and residential, uh, well, I'm not sure, uh, how much interest there is in building residential immediately beside a railroad track. Uh, there may be, but, uh, it's certainly not going to be the most desirable, uh, location. Uh, but I keep hearing the secondary plan. And Counselor Cassidy is right, it is a vision. But it is a vision subject to change. It is not carved in stone. And the very reason we have a planning and environment committee is to consider when things need to be looked at through a different lens. And that's exactly what we have done here. We've looked at the si- situation, uh, and we have the committee recommended, uh, that we go ahead. Um, you know, if we want to really, uh, talk about the number of, of, uh, LPAD appeals and, and things like that, well, you know, then voting to reject this, I guarantee you will generate an LPAD appeal. And, and if that fails, uh, then what we will probably do is lose the humane society in London. You know, it's not easy for a, a not-for-profit or charitable organization to, to raise the kind of funds to acquire land to build a new building. And they have done this without asking us for a nickel of public dollars. Uh, a lot of organizations come to us asking for matching funds. Uh, we remember in the, uh, budget debate that we had in the multi-year budget process about Fanshawe College's request, uh, for money. And I'm just using that as an example. I'm not centering out Fanshawe College. Um, but it is actually, uh, our role to decide when the vision doesn't fit the reality. That's why we exist as a planning and environment committee, and it's why we exist as a council. Uh, so let's not turn our back on a good community partner, on somebody who has done their homework, who has worked with our staff to do everything that they can to bring forward. And I, I point out uh, with all these concerns on the secondary plan, the staff supported every other single piece of this application except the adjacent to the tree LA parking. Every other single piece. So the variation here is small. Counselor Helmer alluded to that. The variation here is small. Uh, and I agree with him on that. Uh, but I don't agree, uh, with what I'm hearing about the secondary plans can never be varied or altered. Uh, that is our job as policymakers and decision makers. So I encourage colleagues to support this. Uh, this is going to be good for the East End. It's going to be good for the redevelopment of the larger Old Oak project. It's going to have the humane society within transit and driving and walking distance for a number of new people who are going to call that part of the city home. Uh, it's going to be just a couple of, uh, blocks away from a rapid transit corridor when the East London link gets built. Uh, it is going to be an ideal situation. And this is the Humane Society of London and Middlesex. Uh, just being off of Highbury Ave, it's going to provide an excellent location for those coming into the city to use the humane society's services. And we heard from the applicant that a lot of humane societies actually locate outside of uh, the municipal boundaries, uh, because of the nature of their work. But here they found a spot that they can use in the city. They want to continue to be the London and Middlesex humane society, and I think we should afford them the chance to do so. So again, uh, I encourage colleagues to support this. While I understand your concerns, this is a good application, and this is actually our job.
Thank you, Counselor Squire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't necessarily want to deal specifically with this application and what I feel about this application, but I certainly do want to address some of the broader issues. Um, as Chair of Planning, I certainly want to address them. And certainly, it appears to me that we are now entering into a period where um, when we have honest disagreements on policy, that they're characterized as, uh, counselors using their own personal opinions to make decisions. Um, those sort of things. And I, I just want to really strongly reject that idea. And I am not going to talk about what another council did or what a council did two councils ago. But I will stand be- behind the decisions I make and how I make them and why I make them. In this particular case, let me tell you that Mr. Thomas Inzic, who was speaking for the planning staff, clearly recognized the right of the planning committee to approve this application with the parking outside of the secondary plan. He recognized that, in fact, told us, well, if you want to do that, here's what you need to do. And it was done based on, I thought, a difference of opinion. And first of all, some of us thought, as Counselor Lewis did, um, that there was a real issue is whether with the buffering and the excess buffering that was provided, whether you could even say anymore the parking was adjacent to the tree LA. Or whether sufficient buffering. Now, you may not agree with me, and I respect that. But it's not my personal opinion, and it's not dishonest. It's what I actually decided after considering the matter. It is also the role of council, and we all know this. Part of the reason we sit here is to look at particular cases and decide when we will provide exemptions to a policy, we will change a bylaw. We will do those sort of things. And we also know that people often come to us and say, well, the bylaw says you can only put this kind of building here. Why are you even considering changing the zoning? And we say to them, I think that is our role. And I can honestly say that no citizen has ever just said to me that that's a dishonest approach. They may disagree with me, but they certainly don't use the word dishonest. So I think it's great to disagree. I don't have a problem with disagreeing, but I do have a problem when people disagree and then insist on putting a label on that disagreement and saying, well, you're doing it because of your personal opinion. Well, your, your decision is going to be interpreted as being dishonest. Um, I, I don't really accept hearing that from my colleagues. I've sat here as a council now for six years, and I have been on the short end of votes on any number of occasions. And I have never cast aspersions on my colleagues' intent on what they voted for and their honest disagreement.
And to be fair, I didn't hear casting aspersions as a reference point, but I do have Counselor Turner on the list.
I took my hand down, your worship. Not much point.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? This is on the motion as amended. Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Pelosi. Closing the vote and the motion carries eight to seven.
Thank you, colleagues. It's my intention to items in, uh, planning environment to, uh, take a refreshment pause, I think is the expression. So, uh, what we'll do is, uh, now turn this back to Counselor Squire.
My wife always says I'm loud enough that I do not need a mic, but I'll, I'll have one in any event. Um, I, I, this is a matter that is familiar to, I think, to, uh, most of my colleagues. I thought, um, quite frankly, that there were some misunderstandings coming out of the planning committee meetings and that matters were not sufficiently clear. So I have, uh, I'm not going to advocate. I, I take the role of chair seriously. I'm not going to jump into the debate about this matter in particular. But, Mr. Chair, I would like to start by just asking some questions of staff that may help the, uh, council in terms of clarifying and shorten the debate if that's, if that is all right. And Mr. Yeoman is actually aware of these questions. So my first question is, um, Mr. Yeoman, I wonder if you might comment on how the buffering of this property, uh, compares to the actual, uh, requirement that is, uh, we have in place for buffering. In other words, is it less or more than is normally required by, by our rules and regulations?
Mr. Yeoman.
Uh, through your worship, so there's two bufferings that are actually occurring as part of this application. One is the natural heritage buffering that's occurring adjacent to the Highbury Woods, um, that is at the rear of, of the property. It is consistent with, um, with our policies. It was recommended based on a sci- scientific study through the environmental impact statement. It has been um, accepted by the city's ecologists as well. Uh, it equals forty-five meters from the drip line of the trees all the way to the, uh, the property line, which is quite considerable. Uh, the second buffering then for this property is on the, um, fronting Meadowlily Road. Uh, that's a landscape buffer that's being proposed. That's actually not a requirement, um, in city policy. It has been something, though, that we've been able to work through with the applicant and their revised submission in order to provide a, a better interface with the area and sort of, uh, improve the character and the fit with the surrounding community as well, uh, to lessen the urban feel of the area as it moves forward, recognizing, though, that the lands are designated for urban uses.
Thank you. Uh, my second question is whether you could comment on how the buffering and zoning for this particular development compares to other developments that are also uh, been approved adjacent to this particular ESA. And by that, I mean the Meadowlily ESA.
Mr. Yeoman.
Uh, through, Mr. Chair, so in the Meadow, or sorry, through your worship, uh, in the Meadowlily Road area, we actually haven't had very much development, uh, to date. Uh, the area is designated for, uh, urban uses, as I mentioned. It currently has, um, urban reserve zoning that's in place for the entire area. So as applications would come in, they would be evaluated using the same framework, uh, that it's applied. Uh, we would anticipate similar setbacks being proposed for any natural heritage feature, uh, in the area.
Thank you. And lastly, I wonder if you might, uh, one of the issues that came up was the density of this development and, and whether, why the particular zoning was put in place for this particular property. And, uh, I just wanted you to comment on that.
Mr. Yeoman.
Yes, thank you through you, your worship. So the zoning that's recommended is an R six zone. Uh, that's a cluster form of zoning which provides uh, opportunities for vacant land condos such as this, uh, for both singles and for townhouses as well. Uh, the zoning that's in place, uh, that's proposed for the, with the original staff recommendation would implement, um, the London Plan Neighborhoods Place Type as well as the eighty-nine official plan, uh, low-density residential, uh, land use designation. Recognizing the low-density residential and land use designation does contemplate townhouses and a maximum of thirty units per hectare for the site. Uh, this is coming out at about twenty-five units per hectare from the proposal.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify those matters, and now I'll turn it back to, to your worship.
Thanks. I'll look for, uh, comments or questions from colleagues. Counselor Hillier.
Thank you very much. Well, I have a few, few comments and then a motion. First of all, this is not about a single development. It's about protecting the buffer areas around our ESAs. So what do we do?
Sorry, I wonder, Counselor Hillier, I wonder this so that we know exactly what it is that we're going to be talking about. Uh, what I am looking for is a motion to, uh, to go on the floor, and then I think we have something we can respond to. So I will look to colleagues, uh, for that, uh,
I, I don't think I can move it because of my vote at committee, so someone else would have to move that.
Counselor Hillier did indicate he had a motion. So Counselor Hillier, if you have a motion, uh, we'll, uh, we'll hear that, please. Go ahead.
Yes, just a motion to reject the, the development at one oh one Meadowlily Drive.
Do you have a second here for that?
I believe I do.
Okay, I see Counselor Lewis seconding that. Comments or questions on uh, on rejecting the staff recommendation? Comments or questions? Counselor Hopkins.
Um, if I may, your worship, I'm a little confused here with this motion to reject. Usually there should be an explanation why before I make comments, and I don't want my five minutes to be taken away from me, just asking that question, just to give you a heads up, but, um, just.
So noted, it won't impact on your five minutes. Uh, I wonder if Counselor Hillier has some thoughts around that since you moved the motion, if that's what you're looking for, Counselor Hopkins. Go ahead, Counselor Hillier.
I had started, but we went in reverse. That's okay. So like I said before, it's not, this is not about a single development. It's about protecting the buffer areas around our ESAs. So what do we do? The developer brought forth a plan, it's checked off all the boxes of the London Plan, the Strategic Plan. They've done everything correctly. But still Londoners don't want this, this type of density in Meadowlily Woods. And if we say no, it probably will get appealed and we could lose. It's difficult for us all. We need the infill development, and no one seems to want it in their area. Now, what do we do? We have to set the example for future development in these buffer areas. Now, this buffer zone might be addressed in a year or so through the rethink, this London zoning, of rethink zoning program. But we need to let the development community know now how we're going to address these areas. Personally, I can't support this development because my constituents don't. But I can understand why my colleagues might. And I'm looking forward to hearing the rest of the discussion on this because I think we're in a pickle. I feel a rock hard place. I'm not sure which way to go.
All right, that was Counselor Hillier's, uh, thoughts, opening thoughts on that. Uh, Counselor Hopkins, are you ready to, uh, make some comments yourself? Your hand is up.
I might as well go for it. I, I did leave the committee, um, being totally open to being convinced that I got it wrong. So I'm open to hearing, um, reasons why I, uh, supported staff's recommendation for this development. And I just want to start off for, um, for those of you who, who may not be aware that this, uh, was referred back, uh, with the previous committee uh, to look at the entrances onto Meadowlily and to also look at the height. I think that was uh, when the first application came to us uh, last term. And here we are looking at the application again with eighty-eight units uh, of residential houses and, and townhouses. And like Mr. Yeoman said, the zoning does allow for some kind of development here. And I, I hear, um, um, Counselor Hillier's concerns around the buffering. That's something I've always, um, tried to really understand the importance and the need for protection around our ESAs. Uh, this committee a month ago supported an application in my ward on Hamlin, right next to an ESA. And it wasn't even a conversation of the thirty meter buffering that was put in. I, I know Meadowl- Lily is very close and dear to everyone. I am very familiar with this area. I, um, I, I, you know, if, if I had my wish, I wouldn't want any development to go around in ESA, that our policies allow for it. I also, uh, want to bring your attention to the zoning that is on here. It's an urban reserve. And the urban reserve is for a vacant land. Condo freehold. It's low, um, low impact. It, it, it's low density. And I know that was a conversation with, uh, the secondary here on this motion at, at, at PEC about the medium density and trying to understand our policies. And I get very confused. There are two forms of zoning he- here, and this was considered the best zoning possible. It was, this council approved another similar zoning of vacant land condo freehold lands in my ward, again. Um, it was on, um, Clayton Walk, and the development still has, hasn't happened. But again, it was those, the same zoning that allows up to thirty units per hectare. I understand this is twenty-five, twenty-seven units per hectare. So it does allow for this low impact development. I wish we could just have a few houses on here and, and have little impact on Meadowlily Road, which is an important road, uh, a heritage feature. The, uh, previous, previous committee made sure that we, uh, asked for a heritage impacts assessment. There was an archaeological assessment done through that process as well. And I, uh, understand with this new application coming back to us, there's going to be more buffering along that, that road to allow for, um, that, that protection of, of that heritage road. And I tried to, uh, 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 committee to, um, uh, get that heritage impact assessment. If you look at the Latch report, and I think that is being pulled because there are a number of comments and suggestions, uh, through that, that I would like, um, uh, that staff and the applicant have regard for Latch's comments and the heritage impact assessment. We're going through the site plan process as we undertake this, uh, application. I, um, would encourage, um, staff, uh, to make sure they have that regard for the heritage impact. I, I've heard from the community aloud and clear, uh, the public's concern of the importance of this road and how, uh, it will be maintained and, um, uh, protected throughout. But I think it's really important as we proceed here, that we understand what our policies can allow for. And I, as a committee member, and as a And I, as a committee member and as a counselor of this municipality, want to have as much control about what kind of development happens here and not have it go through an appeal process, which I think may happen if this is refused. So those are my comments. I'm always open to being convinced somehow I've got it wrong. I hope everyone will be making comments here because I know we received a lot of feedback from the public at Planning Committee.
Thirty seconds, Counselor.
And since then, so again, looking forward to everyone's comments.
Thank you, Counsel Lewis.
Thank you, your worship, and Counsel Hopkins is right. The zoning designations and the two blended recommendations here were a concern of mine at committee because R six, if you go on our own city website, is a medium-density designation despite the fact that the application continually refers to low-density. And it seems to me, from what I've heard and kept my mind open in listening to folks on both sides, that one of the reasons the medium-density zoning is being recommended is because under the new plan for the cluster town housing, you need to have the medium-density, it doesn't fit. Despite the fact that the persons per hectare number fits, the form doesn't fit, the low-density, the form only fits the medium-density, so we're putting in an R six designation. But what it all comes down to for me is, this is not a low-density, low-impact development. This is a medium-density development. I took the opportunity to meet with the applicants as well. I listened to their point of view, I listened to the residents, I visited the site again on the weekend. And I just cannot, in good conscience, square a medium-density R six designation on this site. It's not appropriate for the road. We've heard about, you know, impact, future potential road widens, future potential infrastructure that has to be considered to come in there. And in the interim, the developer will provide pumping stations and that sort of thing. I think that raises a lot of red flags for me as well. It is very close to an environmentally significant area, as well as the south branch of the Thames River. Gravity and physics are a real thing. The pumping requirements, while I believe that the applicant has done everything that they can to meet the requirements and probably would, is still a concern. So I am going to support the rejection of this application. I hope colleagues will as well. I know that there is concern about, you know, well, the developer may just take this to LPAT and we may lose. I think whatever we do tonight, there's a good chance, and again, all of us are speculating on this, but I think that there is a good chance that the community takes it to LPAT as well. So it may end up there regardless of our decision tonight. But for me, it comes down to, this site would be appropriate for some low-density infill. Yes, it's urban reserve, yes, some development would and should happen there, but I would like to see that be low-density, and that's not what I'm seeing in this application. So that's the reason for me to support the rejection tonight.
I see Counselor Cassidy on the list.
Thank you, your worship. So I know we're talking about speculation, and I know there are certain counselors that don't think we should even consider the possibility of an appeal when we're dealing with a planning application. But the fact of the matter is, as Counselor Hopkins pointed out, this has already been referred back. And I believe that the developer has done a lot to listen to the community, to listen to the concerns that have been brought forward, to listen to city staff, and to make adjustments, quite a few adjustments and quite a few compromises on this development. The fact of the matter is, we're past the date for appeal. The developer could have appealed already for a lack of decision by council. If this does go to appeal, the applicant does not have to honor any of these compromises that have been made. The applicant could put forward their original proposal. So all of the work that's being done with the community, all of the work that has been done with city staff could be lost. And if we want to talk about protecting the ESA, all of the compromises that have taken place, this forty-five-meter buffer, that's huge. A two-story building is twelve meters or something like that. So imagine what forty-five meters looks like. That is a very substantial buffer and an area for protection for the ESA. Going to LPAT, it would mean a decision made by people that are not necessarily Londoners, that don't have the same connection to London and desire to see London, London's natural areas protected the way we all want to see London's natural areas protected. The other thing is, and I would look to staff through you, Mr. Mayor, for confirmation, but if this does go to appeal, it is my understanding because the council decision would be opposed to the staff recommendation, that city staff could not defend city council's position at the hearing. City council would have to hire an outside planner, an outside legal counsel to represent city council's position. And the applicant could and would most likely call on city planners as witnesses on their behalf. That's my understanding of how it would work, and I just would like confirmation from city staff.
Well, let's ask city staff. Mr. Yeoman's, I'm not sure we bring Mr. Card into this, but Mr. Yeoman, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you through you, your worship. I'll start briefly, and then I'll turn things over to Mr. Card if he'd like to add more. The counselor is correct in her assessment of the hypothetical of an appeal in this situation.
Mr. Card, is it helpful for you to add anything else to this?
No, Mr. Yeoman's answer is correct. We would be able to represent the city internally because the lawyers have not taken a position on the matter, but they would be using outside experts because city staff would not be available.
Counselor Cassidy?
And would city staff be potentially called as witnesses against city council?
Mr. Card?
Your worship, yes, I've done that many, many times myself in my past life.
Thank you, Counsel Cassidy.
Thank you. I will be voting against Counselor Hillier's motion, and I urge city council as well to vote against this motion. If this motion fails, I would be interested in moving the staff recommendation.
Thanks very much, other comments or questions? Counsel Turner?
Thanks, your worship. It's an interesting debate. I have worked about nine years on the Environmental and Ecological Planning Advisory Committee prior to getting onto council, and six years on the Planning and Environment Committee. So about fifteen years of looking at specific environmental features, environmental impact studies, how development should be appropriately cited next to environmental features. I recognize the concerns that are associated here. It's in an area that has some sensitivities, but it's been noted a few times already. This is vacant land. It's designated as urban reserve. The application is at one of the lowest forms of density that's being applied. It's under thirty units per hectare, so it is a low-density application. So there's not much further in terms of lower density that you get. You get to single-family homes, perhaps, probably the worst use of land from an environmental impact, if that's what you're worried about. Single-family homes are the largest consumer of land in the city by class. You could look at factories and stuff like that, but single-family homes are really poorly using space. So here, we have a little bit of density. An application that reflects and respects the buffers as identified through the Scope TIS. Yet, at our meeting last time, back in October, we asked it to be referred back to staff so that they could work with the applicant to address a few of the issues that were identified. Height is one of them, its interface and the driveways coming into Meadow Lily Road. And it's set in. And I think those were the substantial issues that could be resolved and addressed. And in good faith, the applicant did so. That motion to send it back or refer it back was unanimously, sorry, it was passed by the majority of council. I can't see the vote on the council agenda record. But I would think that in that same vein, that as council sending it back, to have those amendments made and sought by staff and having them fixed and being brought back to us, now you should support it going forward now. And to do so otherwise is, well, it takes us back to our last debate. It is just supplanting our judgment on the policy framework that is quite clear, really lays out how development can occur in situations like this.
Thank you, Counsel Almer.
Your worship, was that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Turner, were you done? I apologize, did I cut you off?
That was my pause for dramatic effect.
Okay, sorry. It was very dramatic, go ahead, please.
I thank you, your worship. Anyway, I will finish up. The environmental impacts on this are addressed. That's why we do environmental impact studies, that's why we identify buffers and separation distances. Those are all addressed in this circumstance. It is on a road, it is in a populated area, there are single-family houses there already. This is low-density. Basically, rejecting this application, as has been said a couple of times already, is a path directly to LPAT. And frankly, I think we get our posteriors handed to us, and we deserve it, if that's what happened. We've got to stop just ignoring our policies. So I encourage you to reject the motion that's been put forward, and then I would entertain and support some motion to accept the staff recommendation.
Thank you, I next have, was that another dramatic pause, or are we good, Counsel Turner? Okay, thank you. Counsel Almer, please.
Thank you. So here's a great example of what I was talking about earlier. And I said this to the applicant quite directly when I spoke with them. You know, this is not my preferred kind of development. It's outside the built area boundary, it's outside the primary transit area. It's kind of like the last place I'd like to see us build new housing. But it is designated in the official plan as urban reserve. What they're proposing is in line with the low-density residential designations under the eighty-nine official plan. It's consistent with the London Plan. This is about the least intense form of development you can imagine for the site other than, you know, even fewer single detached homes. Most of this development is single-family houses. They're just in a condo form, which is why we need the R six zoning. That's the only reason. This is a low-density development, it's fifty-two units of housing. So I could say, well, I don't want development to be outside, I'd rather it be somewhere else, and I could vote against it. And it's politically popular to vote against things like that. Say, hey, people don't like it, I'm going to vote against it. And what happens is it goes to LPAT, and nobody cares what council decided. They just want to know what does the policy framework say? Because that's the LPAT we're stuck with. We actually briefly had one that actually did care what council decided, but we don't have it anymore thanks to the provincial government. And now they'll just hear all the evidence, brand new, and they'll look at the official plan, and they'll look at the policies, and they'll say, this is no, it's fine. So what will happen is, we'll get a development like this, or maybe worse, maybe more intense, because they won't have to go for this particular version, they can come for something else. And it'll happen later, so it'll be more expensive, it'll take longer, it might be a worse development. But what we have accomplished, some people will be happy with me. My ex-wife would be happy with me. She would really like to see no development happen in this site at all. Lots of people would, because they use the trail, they drive their cars over there, and they walk in Meadow Lily, and they don't want any development at all on that site. And I understand why, because they really like this natural area. But, you know, we're the counselors, and we have to make fair decisions that are in line with our policies. And if we stop doing that, we're going to be making very bad decisions. So, you know, I don't particularly like this development, I would prefer that it happened later. I know it would be more politically popular for me to vote against it. But it's in line with our policies, it's a reasonable development, it's low-density, and I'm going to support it.
Thank you, I now have Counsel Salih.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to speak to just kind of say that I won't be supporting the recommendation in front of us here today, but I'll be, you know, and if it's defeated, I'll be supporting the applicant's application. I think everything's pretty much been said. You know, to me, it makes sense, it checks off all the boxes, the applicant has worked with the community. To me, it seems like the applicant has been patient. I think I haven't heard any compelling reasons why not to support this application here today. So I mean, I would probably encourage everyone to consider the facts in front of us and, you know, kind of what we need to do to continue to create an environment where more development comes forward and where we have more opportunities to move our city forward. I mean, the environmental concerns have been addressed. And I think, you know, I recognize that there's some perspectives outside of the community and concerns, but I think the right thing to do here today would be to support the applicant in their application here today. So I'll be voting against the motion that's on the floor right now, and hopefully that's defeated so that we can support the applicant's application.
Thank you, Counsel Squier.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I also would not, would have not, would have liked to see not, this development not coming forward. I'm in agreement with Counselor Almer in that regard. But I think this is different for me than the previous instance where we were dealing with the Humane Society. I think there was a valid reason to allow the parking in that particular case. In this particular case, although I oppose the development at committee, I indeed think it, the applicant complies with everything that we've set out as a requirement to build in this particular area. So I think I'm going to be supporting it now. And I was persuaded certainly by Counselor Almer's, or Counselor, sorry, I was persuaded by Counselor Almer's comments, but also Counselor Turner. I'm not sure about his posterior comment, as long as he wasn't, you know, referring to me specifically. So I'll let him get away with that one, but a lot of what he said was very convincing to me. And I appreciated those comments being made in what I thought was an intellectual planning mode. And that's what I certainly want to hear from my colleagues, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, I have Counsel Rehnenholz.
Thank you, your worship, and I have a few questions, though. First, let me say I do appreciate the counselor for bringing forward a very unambiguous motion in support of his constituents. But I wanted to ask a few questions about some issues that came up. First was the archaeological assessment not being made public. Could I just ask through you to staff why that's generally the case? And maybe they have some other comments about this one in particular?
I typically refer that to staff, but the chair has gotten my attention and has indicated he'd like to respond to that, Counsel.
Yes, that was a question that was actually asked as part of questions after the application, and staff did answer it. The reason the archaeological study and staff can follow up is made public. That once it becomes public, then people will become aware of some of those valuable archaeological features that are on a site, and they may do something about that. They may take them, they may interact with them, they may do something that they shouldn't be doing. So that's my understanding of why it is kept confidential so that those activities cannot happen.
Mr. Yeoman, did you want to add anything to that?
Through you, your worship, the counselor is spot on, and I have nothing to add.
Counsel Rehnenholz.
Okay, thank you. And I mentioned, I asked that because there was, you had some questions about that. So it's interesting, this is a place that I often walk by with my wife. We live in the area, so we cross the river and take a walk up Meadow Lily. It's, the area's an empty field for the large part, with some smaller and a few larger trees on it. The question I have is that this seemed, the motion as it is, essentially seems like a challenge to take us to court. And I think we've heard what will likely happen if we lose, that we could lose. And then also with that, lose the concessions that we asked for and were given the last time. So I do appreciate the developers are very cooperative in trying to make accommodations to what... uh accommodations to what the residents are asking. Um, my, my question is uh through you to our, our planners. Uh, what, what's the path forward or the path forward for the, for the developers if we just simply turn this down with?
Mr. Yeoman.
Uh, through your worship, I'll, I'll do my best on the hypothetical. Um, one of two things would happen is the applicant would uh come back with a revised application, a new application because it'd be a completely uh restarted of the process. Or they would submit an appeal. Um, actually, it could be three things. They could submit an appeal or they could just take no action um and choose to move on. So um, I can't speculate on what the outcome would be from those three options.
Fair enough. Councilor Van Hooft.
Okay, well, thank you. That's, that's very helpful. Uh, if we hope to see a different application, uh, we might be better off trying to provide some direction for that. Uh, we might have a, a lower chance of being taken to LPAT. You know, my question, uh, the next one is if, if council simply designated this, say, R one, how might, how might that make the development uh different or would it be substantially different in terms of the, the density that we could end up with?
Mr. Yeoman.
Uh, through your worship, um, I'll, I'll maybe speak not just in terms of an R one zone, uh, R one zones for a particular existing situation and I know a former built community, but I think what the council is indicating for a, a single family residential type um community. Uh, that would be sort of outside the application that's before you hear. Um, that would have to be sort of a policy review that we do to, to look at that and, and apply that. Uh, it would mean that the development, of course, couldn't proceed. Um, it wouldn't permit townhouses and it wouldn't permit the cluster form of uh housing that's proposed. Uh, we'd also potentially run into some issues then associated with the servicing solution, given that um the condo board is going to be owning the private pumping station enforcement and be taking care of the maintenance as well too, which um is definitely something that is informing us as well.
Counselor.
Okay, thank you. Would it, would it be likely if we said it could only be single family homes that we've got a lower, lower density?
Mr. Yeoman.
Uh, through your worship, uh, if a lower density zone was applied, yes, a lower density form of housing would materialize on the site.
Back to you, counselor.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm not sure. This is a difficult decision. Uh, again, like everybody else, I think people would like to see a very large s- space left for uh the environment. And the comment has been made that it's in the middle of a, of an ESA. I, I don't know if that's, that's quite true. Our, our ESAs don't come in squares. They, they have these strange shape with fingers and then we say there has to be a buffer before the development and these, these developers have allowed quite a large uh buffer and, and a place for a future path uh between the the ESA and, and their property as well. So that's a, a good accommodation for us. Uh, I might comment that on the other side of the road, there's a bit of a berm. Uh, maybe it's eight feet tall and when you're walking, you can't really see over the shrubs to what's behind it. And I also think that maybe people just don't want to see uh a development or just want to feel like they're, they're in the, the, in the wilderness.
Thirty seconds, counselor.
Thanks. So I wonder if, if putting something like that uh would be helpful in that, in that buffered area. But again, I, I, I think I, I'll likely support the uh, the development simply because they have accommodated as mu- as much as possible.
Thank you. I'd like to ask, uh, Deputy Mayor to take the chair.
Yes, I have the mayor. Well, thanks very much. I have to start by acknowledging the passion uh that we heard in terms of the substantial public input uh on this particular proposal. Uh, it was to me almost unprecedented. Um, you know, I, it, it made me review uh, uh, the file literature that we've all been given and try to understand better the importance of the Metal Lily ESA to both the local area, the residents of our city and certainly from some of the folks who are beyond. Um, I was uh also in particular impressed with the level of cooperation and flexibility shown by the developers. They, as uh they were required uh uh to, not required, but did respond to the earlier public uh input and work that they did with city planning staff. Uh, they tried to find a solution that uh would result in a development that's uh compatible. And uh, there were several things they did, as you know, in terms of that discussion, colleagues. They eliminated fourteen driveways. I just got some numbers here. A few dwelling units. Provided the thirty-five meter buffer between the developer lands and the ESA. I think the developer's done all that uh has been asked and, and, and to, within reason to address the sta- staff's concerns. And I think it's for all of those reasons that, what did we hear? Uh, we heard uh that city staff has supported this development proposal because it aligns with the London Plan and the provincial policy statement. Staff are convinced from everything I've read that based on their training and experience that this is compatible with the ESA and uh, and uh for these reasons. And by the way, I'll just turn our attention, if you will, when you look at page three hundred and fifteen uh of our, of our package, which talks about the rationale for the recommended actions. This developer's done everything that they can do. And I was actually quite moved by Counselor Cassidy's comments in this as well. Uh, I thought she made tremendous sense in uh, in, in her rationale for not supporting going ahead with the motion uh to reject staff's uh recommendations. So I will be uh, I'll be uh voting against uh the motion that is currently at hand. And uh, depending on the outcome of that, we'll uh be pleased to look forward to uh whatever is determined by colleagues with respect to going forward here. I don't think there is evidence that I have seen uh to the contrary that would uh justify or support a refusal, uh, which I believe and we've heard discussion amongst us all would certainly la- land us uh at LPAT with uh unnecessary costs for everyone and significant delays that are not needed. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. I'll return the chair to the mayor.
Any other final comments from anyone we, that we've not heard from that would like to speak to this? We're voting on uh motion to uh reject the staff recommendation. And you're right, Counselor Hopkins, it was very clear and concise. I think you made that comment. I see no other comments. Uh, so this is on rejecting the staff recommendation. I will call the question.
Your worship, if I can.
Hello? Yes, Counselor Hopkins, correct?
Yeah, I um, I thought we were voting on the motion presented by Counselor Hillier.
That is correct.
Um, so I just want to see it uh because I don't see that here.
I'll go to the clerk.
Before I vote? Sorry, I just want clarification.
Counselor Hopkins, if you hit the arrow at the top of the voting screen, it'll pull, pull the motion down, which is to refuse the application. Closing the vote in the motion is lost for two eleven.
Thank you. I do, uh, Counselor.
I'd like to move this staff recommendation, your worship.
Thank you. Is there a secondary for that?
Happy to second.
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I know, I, I'm going to recognize Counselor Turner, Counselor Salih, because he'd indicated in his comments and raised his hand just before you spoke. So that's seconded by Counselor Turner. Um, is any other discussion needed, colleagues, on this? It's open as you wish. We'll give the clerk a chance to uh prepare that. Counselor Van Hooft, please.
Yes, thank you, your worship. And I just may have some uh, uh questions uh through you to staff. Uh, if there's still concerns about uh this or the, the proximity to the ESA, I, I, I think we've determined that having it across the road i- is fine, but there's a couple of houses that are there. Uh, is there anything uh from stopping the city from uh offering to purchase some of that property? And I guess my other question is uh, is it, uh, would it be feasible for us to try to arrange a right of first refusal on some of the other properties uh closer to the, closer to the trails? Uh, because I, I, I see this issue coming up again. Were there to be another purchase and another development uh schedule?
I'm not sure that the second part of your question relates to the motion that's at hand, Counselor Van Hooft, but Mr. Yeoman, did you want to add anything to the counselor's query?
Uh, yes, through your worship, um, Parks has not indicated a, a need for municipal ownership associated with this beyond um, the open space lands that are being secured as part of the environmental review. Um, should council wish to proceed with further acquisition, I'd encourage um a conversation with Mr. Warner because that'd be a realty matter outside of the planning discussion here.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Van Hooft.
Okay, thank you. I think that satisfies me.
Any other questions with respect to the motion? See none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote in the motion carries thirteen to two.
Last item, uh, with Planning Environment Committee and with your indulgence, we'll deal with that before uh we would uh ask for a brief recess. Uh, Counselor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, the third report of the London Advisory Committee of Heritage, on heritage, um, the recommendation that we made regarding that has to be amended based on the decision we made tonight. I know the clerk has some wording, um, and I'm prepared to move that.
Clerk, are we going to see that wording then?
She, she can also explain the, the rationale.
Good, clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the uh, Ms. Westlake Power does have the wording and she'll have it up shortly. Um, what, the planning committee passed the report correctly. However, the planning report that was printed with the agenda was missing parts B to D of the, of that clause. So um, so we're correcting it by ensuring that the incomplete latch report is included.
I'm prepared to move that to get it on the floor.
That will require a secondary. Counselor Hopkins, thank you. Comments or questions? Counselor Van Hooft.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, I was looking through this report and had meant to ask the, meant to ask the question earlier, but in this one, they the, the latch recommended a maximum building height of two point five meters. And I'm wondering, was that, should that have been two point five stories?
Let's uh take that back to staff. Mr. Yeoman.
Uh, through your, sorry, through your worship, um, we would interpret that as two point five stories and that's consistent with the recommendation that you just approved for the zoning uh portions of the property are two meters, others were two point five, sorry, two, two, two stories and two point five.
Counselor.
Okay, thank you very much. I was surprised by the, by meters being uh written in there. Uh, that's a very short house. Thank you.
The clerk's advised as well that she'll make that correction uh to reflect the two point five stories, which is somewhat taller than two point five meters. Thank you, counselor. Other comments or questions? Then let's call the question.
Counselor Lewis and Counselor Helmer. Closing the vote in the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Squire.
I now move it as amended.
Is there a secondary for this? Thank you very much. Let's call the question.
Closing the vote in the motion carries.
That's the end of my report, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Because I'm wondering this, it is uh by uh, by my watch, six fifty-three. I wonder if we might take a, a pause till seven fifteen, uh, give us a chance to uh wash our hands and do what we need to do. I wonder, could we get screens on? I'd like to get a motion to uh uh, uh, to recess till seven fifteen. Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Turner. Thanks very much. Uh, by show of hands, let's do it this way. All those in favor?
Motion carries.
See you back at seven fifteen. Thank you all.
Colleagues, I wonder if we could get screen time, please? Thanks very much. Now we are resuming our council meeting. We are now on item 8.4, the sixth report of community and protective services. I'll call on Chair and Councillor Jesse Helmer.
Thank you very much. I've declared a preliminary interest on item number 15, which is related to golf. So I'll ask Councillor Hillier to present that part when we get to it. I've been advised by colleagues that number seven, which is 2.6, related to UNESCO Music City designation, and number eight, which is 2.7, the film update, they'd like those pulled for discussion separately. And let me know if there's anything else, Councillor Van Meerbruggen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to have 2.1 called separately as I have a conflict as my wife operates from Dicke.
Okay, so I think I'll move everything else. I don't see anyone else flagging any items.
So if I understand that correctly, councillor, we are dealing separately with 2.1, 2.6, and 2.7, is that correct? And 4.5, that's your conflict there, as so noted.
Just briefly, I wanted to say we have a lot of very important reports from staff about homelessness prevention and especially indigenous homelessness strategy. And I want to commend them for those reports and the work that has taken extending the motel space. Especially is going to be very important as we're working through the pandemic and continue to do so. And I know that a lot of great work has been happening. It's great to see the other levels of government helping us out with the financial side, which was uncertain for a while, and I'm glad that it landed in the right place.
Thank you. On the items that we're voting on, does anyone wish to make any separate comments? I wonder if I could call on the Deputy Mayor then take the chair.
Yep, and I'll go to the mayor.
Thanks very much. Colleagues, I'd like to talk about briefly about item 14, 4.4, affordable housing units in London. You'll recall, we started this discussion when I presented the state of the city through the Chamber of Commerce to the community at large. And what we affectionately call the big idea, but it's extremely serious, is the issue around affordable housing in our community. Let me say that one of the things I was very proud to announce that day, and it was supported by the federal government later that morning, was that we had moved veterans homelessness to functional zero. Doesn't mean we're not going to find a veteran who isn't on the street from time to time. But when that person's been identified and we're grateful for all of our city staff and community groups and Veterans Affairs amongst others and the Legion that have helped us so dramatically on this. But when we do discover there is someone, we put them into a situation where we provide them with housing in pretty quick order. One of our seniors residences, residents of Italiana, had one particular building, Residence Ortona, where they dedicated units for homeless veterans in the double digits. And for that, we're very grateful, as we are grateful to everyone else. The challenge I said then was that if we could do this for veterans homelessness, why can't we do this for indigenous people living in London? Why can't we do this for women and children leaving homes in distress and in dire circumstances? Why can't we do it for all of London's chronic homeless? So that's the challenge. That number, according to our municipal staff, is 3,000 units. And as a result of that, city staff have been working behind the scenes. You know, we average somewhere between 125 or so units per year that we make ready. To get to 3,000, that's 20 years. So the question is, why can't we do it in 10? The next question is, then why can't we do it in five? It means quadrupling the initiative. And I was broached by developers in this community who said, we want to help in a huge way. And you can't do this just with the will of council and the will of staff, as critically important as that is. You need our community partners, our not-for-profits, our development community. You need senior levels of government to make this work and everyone. And I mean to a person that we've spoken to who has been incredibly enthusiastic. So as we go forward with this project, colleagues, I think this will be, to me, the legacy of this council, that what we started tonight with this approval is something that will reverberate throughout the community in such a positive way in many years to come. So I'm really excited about this. I think it's critically important. It was passed unanimously at committee. And I look forward to your support here tonight as we move forward. Make no mistake, it's a tremendous amount of work, but together. Because I think if there's one issue that truly defines this council in terms of our caring, it's this particular thing. When you give people a home, you give them dignity. And you know, you give them a chance. So Chair, I want to make those comments, thank colleagues in advance for their support and the support that they've shown me and they've shown staff all the way along as we've been dealing with various aspects of this. The work's only starting. That's what we're starting tonight. And the real work is going forward. So thank you all for your commitment to making this just a better London. Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you. I will return the chair to the mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments with respect to the non-pulled items? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you especially for your words just now. This is a whole of London responsibility and it takes a whole of London approach. And I'm especially happy with the homeless prevention, single source procurement report that came through. And, you know, we see we have community partners at LOSA and Salvation Army working with us on this. I've had an individual reach out to me and say, you know, with the pandemic and all of the exacerbating effects of the pandemic, I hope that City Council is reexamining all their plans and making changes to the response to people living without shelter and things like that. And I assured him that we were, and this is an example of this report, especially when we read that the aim of this particular program is to wind down, but also to ensure that individuals are paper and document ready to secure permanent housing. So I like that staff are looking to the future, that this is not just a short-term thing, that we have a problem, there's a pandemic, and let's deal with that. And once the pandemic's over, we go back to status quo. So I'm so pleased to see that that is not what's happening. I never would have expected that that would be what's happening, knowing the staff that we have working in these areas. But I'm really pleased with this report. And as Councillor Helmer said, you know, the following report as well, the Indigenous Homelessness Strategic Plan, seeing the number of people in London that are waiting for secure, stable housing. We don't always see them apparently in front of our eyes. People that don't have secure, stable housing aren't necessarily living out on the streets. They have temporary plans in place, but everybody deserves, as you said, Mr. Mayor, the dignity of a safe place to lay their head at night. And so I'm really pleased to see all of these initiatives moving forward. And I'm looking forward to a time when we have functional zero homelessness across the board, no matter what sector you belong to.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Councillor Helmer has put these on the floor. Let's call the question.
Councillor Van Meerbruggen. Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Thank you. Councillor Helmer.
I'll put this is the childcare advisory committee report, which Councillor Van Meerbruggen has declared a preliminary interest on.
Any comments or questions with respect to this item? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 with one.
Thank you. Councillor Helmer.
Item 2.6 on the floor, Councillor Van Holst indicated he wanted this pulled, this to deal with UNESCO designation as a music city.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councillor Van Holst.
Thank you, Worship. I guess I'm not against us getting a badge from the United Nations for being a music city. That's our goal. I'm wondering, though, about the ongoing reporting. Just how onerous was that? Will that be to us? Maybe I could get some information from staff about that.
Let's ask Mr. Stafford.
Thank you. And through your worship, I've got Mr. McGonigal here with us tonight. So he'll be able to elaborate on some of the specific questions.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. McGonigal.
Thank you. And through your worship, from our perspective, as noted in the report, we don't find the reporting to be onerous. It's developing four-year Music City designation plans. And we believe that the work that we've done in the music sector well positions us for those four-year plans moving forward.
Councillor.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And that's fine. That satisfies me. I don't have further questions to ask because of that. So I'm happy to support this then.
Any other comments or questions? Briefly, I'd like to ask then the Deputy Mayor to take the chair, please.
Yeah, and I'll go to the mayor.
Thanks very much. We have a new Chamber of Commerce CEO. Graham Anderson has a strong music background, in addition to his work with the Ontario Chamber of Commerce. He joined our London community just weeks ago. I know that he has strong views in a very positive way about London being designated UNESCO City of Music because he believes the economic opportunities are endless. But you know, all of us understand and recognize the great role the music has in this community. And all we have to do is look at the tremendous work and concerts and shows and local entertainers that we have seen through Bud Gardens, Sunfest, Aolian Hall, and Music Hall of Fame in London, just to name several. And we have tremendous talent in this city. So to be able to have an economic opportunity to build on, I think this is exciting for us, and I would look forward to us building on this. It's one thing to have a designation, but then you need to do a little work on that. I think that's the development opportunity that we will have as well. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. And I'll return the chair to the mayor.
Any other comments, colleagues? Seeing none, let's call the question.
Councillor Sparr. Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Councillor Helmer.
Thank you. I'll put item 2.7 on the floor. This is the update on the Film Office, and Councillor Van Holst also pulled this one.
Any comments or questions, colleagues? Councillor Van Holst.
Thank you, Worship. And sorry, there's a couple of items that I just indicated I wanted to make comments on, but they seem to have been pulled as well as the ones I'd like to pull. So if I've slowed things down a little bit, I apologize for that. However, I'm excited about this. We're now moving forward, about to implement the film strategy. And we're passing that on to the LEDC to look after. And I think this is a great home. And the community also thinks this is a good place for it. We'll see how closely the ideas that were presented by the community kind of match the vision of the LEDC and work through that. But I think there's tons of potential here. And I look forward to some filming happening this year. There's interest, and I think we'll see some exciting results soon. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Vote and the motion carries, 14 to one.
And we have one last item, I believe, Councillor Helmer, that you wish to have. Deputy Mayor Morgan, Chair?
Vice Chair Hillier, I think.
Oh, excuse me. Vice Chair Hillier, please go ahead.
No problem. Thank you. Yes, I'll put the 4.5 capital and operational resources in London on the floor.
Any comments or questions? Councillor Van Holst.
Thank you, Worship. So I had sent communication to the committee asking for us to request that staff report back with a plan to make golf more sustainable. When we ended up selling the River Road Golf Course in that communication or in that meeting, we seemed to determine that we weren't out of the woods in terms of golf and our operational and capital requirements. So since there's been some residual concern about that in many communications to myself and I think others, I think it'd be nice for us to see what plan is on the table to make sure that it's more sustainable. So I'd like to put that motion on the floor. And maybe I'll look to Councillor Hillier as a secondar.
I'm sorry, as Chair, I cannot second, but I could rescind the chair if required, if you cannot find a secondar.
You are able to second a motion.
Oh, I can. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. I will second. Thank you.
Sorry, now I'm, now I've been, I might be upended by the clerk. Give us some wisdom, clerk, please. Okay, we were right. You can second, Councillor Hillier.
I second the motion.
Okay.
Okay, that motion has been circulated, colleagues. I'll look for any comments or questions. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Worship. Just a question to staff. Knowing that we've had multiple reports... in the past, was there a plan that we would hear back from staff in any case, even without Counselor Van Holst bringing this forward? Did they have a plan to give an update at some point?
Mr. McGonigal.
Thank you. And through your worship, the golf system is reported on annually through the budget process. It also comes forward as part of the annual user fee process. Should council wish us to report back, we're happy to do so. But we believe the reports and the recommendations that were just passed about River Road provided a sustainable path forward for council for golf pays for golf. So thank you.
Counselor Cassidy.
No, thank you for that, for answering my question.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And a quick question through you to staff as well about the motion that's before us. And I am not exactly sure what can be reported at this moment in time. Is that a fair question through you?
Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. McGonigal.
Sorry, I apologize. Through your worship, I'll just if I can look for Counselor Hawkins to repeat that question. I was just trying to bring up the motion itself. Thank you.
Would you repeat that, Counsel Hopkins, please?
Yeah, I understand. The motion is to get a report back. And I am just wondering what kind of a report, given that there isn't very much time that has lapsed here. And i- is there really much to report on if this was to go forward?
Did you hear that, Mr. McGonigal?
Yes, thank you. And through your worship, I I think that from our perspective, we're comfortable with the path that we have provided council with difficult decisions that we have had to make in the golf system. We're happy to report back on that path to sustainability, which was driven by an infrastructure gap, an unfunded infrastructure gap of about six million dollars. And we believe with the decisions that council has already made about the golf system, that it is sustainable. But again, happy to report back with any council direction in which council would like to see.
Counsel Hopkins.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counsel Morgan.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the motion, and we're looking for a report back with a plan that addresses both the capital and operational needs of the municipal golf courses in London. So I understand that we, you know, we're going to take the proceeds of any sort of sale from River Road and meet a part of the capital needs of the rest of the golf system. I will say a plan to address them or meet them completely. There are many areas of the organization that have an infrastructure gap. And I'm not sure, you know, I'm sure we want to be careful about meeting the needs of one specific area over the others. I think these are things that have to be dealt with over a long period of time with a with with a capital plan and a plan to address the infrastructure gap across the corporation. So I'm unsure on what this report would actually look like. If it's how far does it get us, you know, if we sell River Road, whatever those proceeds are, and what's the remaining gap and the information on that? I'm good with that. And then we have a discussion there. But I will say the gap in golf is much like the gap in dozens of other areas of the corporation. We we do not have enough money to fund all of the infrastructure that we need moving forward. We're working very hard at trying to address that, which each and every budget, when we sock more away through the plans that we have with surpluses and the way that they're deployed. So I'm 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 not adverse to getting some information back. But I would be cautious about, you know, lot looking at the infrastructure gap as a whole and starting to say, let's address it here and here and here and here. Because I think we are going to end up doing a lot just with the way that we've reallocated the proceeds of River Road whenever and however much that is is sold for, which is still obviously down the road. So those are my comments. And I'm just unclear on what additional we'll be getting with this motion, if we're going to get some sort of, you know, plan to fully address the gap or if it's just information. If someone could comment on that, that'd be helpful to me.
Mr. McGonigal, can you comment on that?
Thank you. Through your worship, I when we talk about a sustainable path from the golf system, it it isn't to bring the infrastructure gap to zero, as I think Counselor Morgan has noted. So I just want to remind council, the report about River Road had three strategies to reach sustainability. One was about allocating the proceeds from any disposition. The second was about removing operating losses annually from the system. And the third was to remove some capital requirements that probably took you from and I'm estimating on this now, but it took you from around six million dollars to five million dollars in capital needs because of the avoidance of the capital requirements for River Road specifically. So I just want to provide some context on that three-pronged approach to sustainability.
You just trailed at the very end, Mr. McGonigal. Could you just repeat that last sentence? Because it was just trailing off.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize for that, your worship. Through you, I was just trying to finish there by saying that that was the three-pronged approach that administration brought forward to council, put municipal golf system back on a path to sustainability.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anything else?
Yeah, if I could hear through you to the mover of the motion, what in addition to that is is he looking for? That would be very helpful to me on this, because I just want to understand what additional beyond what has been said that he's looking for.
Can we do that in specific terms, Counselor Van Holst, please?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Happy to answer the question. And of course, golf is a bit of an outlier for us in terms of the the infrastructure gap, because we've said that golf should pay for golf, which means it should be covering that covering that gap. And so what I'd like to see is the plan for us to to deal with that infrastructure, how we're going to deal with our fee, change our fee structure so that we we meet that infrastructure gap. Because if we don't, then we'll we may run into some other situations. I certainly don't want to have us need to sell another golf course because we haven't done we haven't we haven't done that. So there's a number of residents who have suggested that had we done things different, that River Road might not have been had to be sold.
I need I need to be specific. Sorry, counsel, I'm cutting you off. I need you to be specific to the question, please, as opposed to as opposed to residents' views on this, please.
Okay, well, I I think I was I think I was specific. How how do we see our fee structures and our operations changing so that that infrastructure gap is is covered? Or what else will we bring in to cover those infrastructure shortfalls? So for instance, there was the the idea of multi-use for the Thames Valley Golf Golf Pavilion. Those are those are some of the things that could be there. But I would like to I would like to see that that there is there is a plan that will cover cover those.
Okay, I okay, I've got that. I think that's clear. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, my my challenge with this, your worship, is I'm I'm still not exactly clear what what we're getting beyond what staff would normally be reported on. We did a service review. There was a lot of information that came out of that service review. There's been a report, and there's going to be regular reporting on the impacts of the decisions that we've made. I I I'll be honest with you. This I we keep saying this idea that golf pays for golf. I know it's been in reports, but that is that is not true. There is lots of backend supports that the corporation gives to all parts of of our activities, including, you know, legal and human resources. So, you know, I'm I don't know if I need to go down that path. I think we've made a big decision. I'm willing to support the assets we have in in multiple different ways. And I'm not sure it needs its own independent, you know, capital plan outside of the the regular capital plan that the corporation has for its infrastructure gap. So I'm a little lost on whether I'm going to support this or not, because I'm not really sure what we're getting in addition.
Thank you. I've got now Counselor Squire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I think that what we've heard today from staff is that they asked us to make difficult decisions to maintain the sustainability of our golf system. We made those decisions. They're confident that those decisions are going to allow us to do that. Perhaps down the road, we would get a report updating us on where we are. That would be fine. But I think if we 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 go down this road of trying to bring new things forward and new streams of income at this point in time, I just I don't think we need to do that right now. And I think we also have to get out of this whole debate that that, you know, the River Road debate's over. It's done. We voted and we made a decision. And and we're moving forward with the approach we have. So I I'm not going to look at getting a report at this point in time. I trust staff will in the future keep us updated on golf and how it's doing.
Counsel Lewis.
Thank you, worship. Counselor Squire summed up the points I was going to make very well. I'm just going to add to this. You know, if this was a request coming in conjunction with an annual report for some more information, I might support it. But frankly, we haven't finished the process of the sale of River Road, directing those proceeds appropriately. So I will not be supporting this. I just think we're getting the cart ahead of the horse here. I know that there are some residents still very passionate about the River Road decision, but Counselor Squire is right. The decision's been made. It's time to look to the future. And I understand that that's what Counselor Van Holst is suggesting we do. But I think we need to finish getting our house in order with the decisions that have just been made before we task staff with another report, hearing from them already, that we will be getting an operational report in the budget and through the annual review. So I'm not prepared to support it at this time. I would encourage the counselors, if they have specific questions about what in particular needs to be addressed in terms of infrastructure, to approach our staff and have those conversations one-on-one, because I think they'll find the staff are more than happy to fill them in on the items that are in urgent need of repair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, a motion's been put on the floor, seconded duly seconded. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion is lost. Three to eleven with one recuse.
Thank you very much. Counsel Hummer, anything else for you, sir?
I think that's it.
We will actually, just to finish that off, we will look for a motion to receive the report and the communication from Counselor Van Holst. Counselor Lewis, seconded by oh, Counselor Hummer, would you put that on the floor? That's sufficient, apparently.
I won't, but you can get Counselor Hillier to do it.
I'll never listen to the clerk again, I promise. Counselor Hillier, are you prepared to put that on the floor?
I will put that on the floor.
Thanks very much. Any other comments? We'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen with one recuse.
Thank you. I think Counselor Hummer, we're done now, aren't we? Thanks very much. I appreciate your support. Colleagues, we now have the seventh report of the Priorities and Policy Committee. I'll call on Deputy Mayor Morgan to present the report.
Thank you, your worship. This is an eight-item report. My intention is to call seven separately, which is four point three, the request for research on the effects of public health restrictions in London. If anybody else would like something else called separately, I'd be happy to do that. Looks like Counsel Hopkins does.
Counsel Hopkins.
Yes, if you could pull item eight, four point four. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items, colleagues, wish to have separate dealt with separately? Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, worship. I'm not asking that seven be pulled so at this time. So if if there was somebody else who was was pulling out, that's fine. Maybe that can just be included.
I believe a colleague declared a conflict on it at the meeting. I wanted to give him the opportunity if they felt they needed to do that again to do so.
Oh, of course. Thank you.
Okay, if that's it, then it sounds like I can put one through six on the floor for consideration.
Comments or questions with respect to items one through six? Counsel Lewis.
I'll be very brief, your worship. I just wanted to take an opportunity to rise and express my support for Counsel Ploza's appointment as the new Budget Chair. I reserve my comments at SPPC, but I know she's going to do a great job. She already does a great job chairing the Civic Works Committee, and I'm looking forward to working with her on what I know is going to be a tough budget process. But we've got a good Chair ready to step up and help lead us through that. So I'll be supporting that 100% and look forward to working with her on that.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
Just on that same point, Counsel Ploza has a lot of the attributes that'll make for for a good Chair of of a budget. I think she's someone who listens, and I think she's she's certainly been in my dealings with her. She's been more than happy to look at things from the point of view of my constituents, and I really am pleased with this appointment.
I wonder, Deputy Mayor, if I might comment on the same then, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks very much. Since we're on the same theme of of this particular topic, you know, it's interesting. I'm going to start, actually, it sounds like some counselors are really happy to have a new Budget Chair. I'm not sure what that implies. But I would say this, colleagues, you'll know that that the role of Budget Chief was was done by appointment in the last administration. It certainly was the purview of the mayor to make that decision. It was done that way. The good news is that is that Deputy Mayor Morgan was the individual who was chosen to accept to take on that role. And when I became mayor, one of the things that I thought was appropriate was that I take this in front of council. And I asked you to support the Deputy Mayor for a four-year term. And you were tremendously supportive. It said two things, though. It it spoke to the confidence that we all have in in Deputy Mayor Morgan, but it also, I think, affirmed council's prerogative to have input to this process as well. So while it's still the purview of the mayor, I will tell you that having the support of council members, I think, fortifies and solidifies the position of the Budget Chief. So acknowledging that, the and and I would certainly suggest that if the Deputy Mayor wants to comment on this subject, he can too. But when he and I spoke of him focusing more of his efforts in the role of Deputy Mayor, one of the things that he said he would provide full support to the nominee for that role as well. And so first, I need to say my deepest, sincerest thanks to Deputy Mayor Morgan in the role that he's played for a number of years. He's helped us through some pretty challenging times and has done it with good grace and class, and he's a pretty smart person as well. So with all of that, I would certainly, I know I speak on behalf of all of council when I say to the Deputy Mayor, thank you for a great job, and I truly mean that. I would also like to congratulate Counsel Ploza. I think that she will be amazing. You've heard a couple of our colleagues already say some pretty nice things about her. She's extremely able, very competent and thorough, and we all look forward to working with her as we go forward as well. So thank you, Deputy Mayor Morgan. Congratulations, Counsel Ploza. We look forward to working with you both in your different capacities. Thank you, Chair.
Great. And I would like to to make just a couple of brief comments. First, I I want to say to Counselor Squire, it's okay to use the term upgrade in your comments. I know that's what you're thinking in your head. But I I want to say to my colleagues, I really appreciated my time as as Budget Chair. And it was it was some of the 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 most enjoyable, as well as, I would say, the most difficult, you know, parts of my time as as a municipal counselor, particularly chairing debates on, you know, the things that we have differences of opinions on. And I I want to say, I think I have learned like just a ton that I will carry with me for the rest of my life through through this role and everything that everybody has taught me. In particular, our phenomenal finance staff and the administrative team at the City of London. Being able to work closely with them on this file has been an incredibly rewarding experience and I think an invaluable learning experience for me. So to Annalisa Bourbon and Mr. Hayward and their 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 teams, you know, thank you. you know, thank you for everything that you've, you've taught me about budgeting. I don't think, never moved a $4 billion motion before, so that was kind of cool, too. But, but certainly learned a lot about the way that the budgeting works at a, at a municipal level. I had an economics degree, but I never applied it, you know, in this way. So mom's pretty proud, too, I'll say. So thank you for giving her the opportunity to, to say that. On Counselor Pelosi, like, I, I really do mean what I said. Like, I, I think it's an upgrade. Like, I've done this for a long time, and that means you kind of get stuck in your ways a little bit, and you're going to bring a perspective that we haven't had in the Budget Chair. And I think that's going to be just excellent for our city and excellent for council in the way that you support them. Being Budget Chair isn't about getting special access to make decisions on the budget. It's about setting up the rest of us for success in the tough decisions we have to make. And I've seen the way that you've chaired the meetings, and particularly very difficult meetings. I think you're gonna, you're gonna keep us under control. And I, I will say, I think Counselor Helmer said it best when, I'll apologize in advance. I like making motions on the budget, so not being in the chair means I get to be a little more active. So I look forward to, to you keeping me wrangled in during budget debates in the future. And anything you need, I'm certainly there to support you, like I know all of your, your colleagues are. So best of luck, and to my colleagues, thank you again for the opportunity to serve in this way. It was, it was one of the best experiences I've ever had. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Pelosi?
Thank you, your worship. Just thank you to Deputy Mayor Morgan for his prior leadership and offer to help of whatever candidate it was that came forward and took this opportunity. And thank you. Already had a meeting with staff this week, just starting to understand what's coming our way, as council's going to get an update in the near future. And for those who know me, I don't like to say more words than I need. And being a good salesperson, I will stop before I talk anyone out of potentially supporting me. So thank you, and I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I know we focused for this purpose on item 4.1. There are a number of items, one through six, or two through six, that if anyone wishes to discuss. But we've been on a nice topic so far. Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion passes, 15 to zero.
Deputy Mayor? Sorry, congratulations, Counselor.
Yes, thank you. The next item I'll put on the floor is number seven, which is 4.3, request for research into the effects of public health restrictions in London. The committee chose to receive the communication.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we will call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to one with one recused.
Deputy Mayor?
Item eight, or 4.4. This is a motion to refer a number of items related to the structure and operation of council to the Governance Working Group. If colleagues remember, we made some adjustments to the language on this at the committee, and it's there for you in the report, and I'm happy to put it on the floor.
Comments or questions? Counselor Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I didn't support this at committee, and I'll most likely not support it again. As much as I'm all for finding efficiencies to better serve Londoners, I think we should be doing it at all times. And given that we're in this pandemic now, I don't see this as, as a priority with extra work going to staff. But I, I'm not going to lie, I'm going to look forward to seeing what the efficiencies are going to be coming back to committee. So again, just not really, this to me is not, not a priority at the moment.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, that closes. One comment on the last item. I, as Chair of the Governance Working Group, I've made arrangements with the clerks to call three meetings over the next couple of months. We'll make sure that's circulated to all of council, as I know the items that the working group will be discussing are, are of interest to everybody. So we'll make sure everybody knows when those dates are. So other than that, the SPPC report is done.
Thanks very much. I appreciate that. Colleagues, just to explain what we're going to be doing, firstly, there are no deferred matters. I'm not aware of any inquiries. And there are no emergent motions of which I've been made aware. So there are some bylaws we need to pass now. And as is our custom, then we will move into closed session. This is as much for the benefit of the public as well. We'll move into closed session. When we come out of closed session, we will have the sixth report of the Corporate Services Committee. That's a special committee that was called. Then we will carry on with our bylaws and adjourn for the evening. So just to give you a sense of what it is that we're dealing with now. So in front of you now, we are going to be dealing with bills 134 through 147 inclusive, and 150 to 162 inclusive, and 164 through 168. And with that, I will look to, I will look for a mover and a secondary. Moved by Counselor Helmer, seconded by Counselor Lehman. We'll call the vote. Counselor Helmer, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Did he call the bylaw, the revised bylaw for 1414 Dundas Street separately?
Yes, we'll just get the reference number. So as we get that, Counselor Helmer, were you moving or were you asking that is the question?
Just wanted it separated. I'm happy to move the rest.
That's Bill 157. So in the bills, 150 through 162, 157 will be called separately. So again, for those with the exception of 157, you're comfortable moving, Counselor Helmer? Seconded by Counselor Lehman. And that's the vote we'll call.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15.
Now look for a mover and a secondary, second reading. Through 147, 150 through 162, excluding 157, and 164 through 168. Do I have a mover, please? Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Van Mirbergen. Any discussion? Let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15.
Thank you. And for third reading enactment of bills 134 through 147, 150 through 162, excluding Bill 157 and 164 through 168, I'll look for a mover and a secondary, please. Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Turner. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Colleagues, 157, I'll look for a mover and a secondary for introduction and first reading. Moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Van Mirbergen. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 11 to four.
Colleagues, of second reading of Bill 157, is there a mover? Counselor Lehman, seconded by Counselor Van Hols. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 11 to four.
Colleagues, for third reading enactment of Bill... A mover and a secondary, please. Moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Van Hols. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries.
Thank you. Just before we go into closed session, I'll ask, we always do, just to advise the public about the items that we're going to be dealing with.
Mr. Mayor, we're going into closed session to discuss five confidential matters, four of which are property matters and one is a personnel matter.
Thanks very much. To do that, we need a mover and a secondary. Please move by Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Van Hols. Thank you. We'll call the question.
Counselor Turner? Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Thank you. Colleagues, just give us a couple of moments while we, while we...